This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, and just as a reminder, please make sure your phones are on mute. And if you are accessing online through GoToMeeting, just make sure your phones are on mute, unless you're one of the board members or you have been identified to speak. I'll call the roll. So onsite, in person, we have Bob Gephardt, Doug Banks, Ed Tinkle. Participating virtually is Flavia Walsh and Bill Guy. I'll just need a motion to allow their...
Motion. Bill and Flavia.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great. So we will start with public comments. Laura?
We have Jim Wazuski from Silver Lakes regarding Pond Banks 85 and 88. Just a reminder, I got that time here.
Unlike usual, this one take that off.
So I have a couple of comments. I took a look at the drawings and the engineering plans for Lakes 88 and 85 in Silver Lakes. First thing I want to do is for the residents, from the residents of Silver Lakes, thank you for getting this going and going through and doing the remediation. Put us all on the same level as all the other ponds that have been remediated. We had our board meeting last night and you don't hear a lot of praise coming sometimes at the CDD at our board meetings, but there was praise all around the room yesterday. So everybody is really excited about this, even the people in Lake 89 who are not getting done this year, who are in the future, they are excited to see something finally starting here. So there's just a couple of comments I have about this specifically looking at the plans. There's a couple of small things like if there's some street names that are wrong on the plant and stuff like that, but that's minor. The first question though, or comment is for Lake 88, which is our middle lake, which is right where our entryway is into the community. It shows it's going to be remediated with the rock all the way around except for a patch that's right in the entryway that's, you know, a couple hundred feet long. It's common area property and we really want to know why that's not being done. And it's very important to us, not just aesthetically, because it'll look terrible, frankly, when you come into the community, but the more important part is our governing documents only allow fishing on any of the ponds if you don't have a lakefront property from that area. That's all there is. And it's usually kids who are fishing there. And if, you know, one of the goals here is to make sure people don't fall in and hurt themselves on a pond, that's an area that has a lot of traffic, a lot of kids, and that is, are the main fishing area for the entire community for non-lakefront property owners. So I'm not quite sure why that wasn't done, but I'd like you to, you know, take into consideration maybe having that done just to avoid any problems with all of our kids fishing over there. The second thing, you know, the things are kind of minor. I was looking at where the parking and restroom areas are for the workers. For Lake 85, it's across Griffin, right across from our entrance, but across the street on Griffin, which is probably the closest thing you can do. It's going to be a little bit of a long walk for them to get from 88 from the access point on 85 over there, but that's probably all you could do. But for 88, which is literally directly across the street from that parking lot and restroom, you put another one in right at our entryway. And, you know, the question is, can you just use that one that's been established along Griffin Drive for both ponds rather than having, you know, one right in our entryway and then one across Griffin for both ponds?
So Jim, 85's restroom and parking is in the front area while the 88's parking and restrooms across the street?
No, it's the other way around.
The other way around.
Which doesn't make sense to us because 88, the entryway, I mean, literally is directly across the street.
I don't know why we have it all in one side. We can talk to...
Yeah, I think putting it in one place would be, would be good because it's exactly the opposite of what you would think it might be. And the last thing is something that's kind of an ongoing issue, but residents brought it up last night again, is there seems to be sometimes some confusion over where the lake access point is, lake access easement is. And sometimes you see aquogenics and people just driving around in people's backyards, not along, not along the easement, along the lake, but just to get there. And there is a specific lake access point, just, you know, a request to make sure that the contractor uses that lake access point as opposed to just kind of randomly going through people's yards. Because that has been a problem and I know it's been brought to the attention of staff multiple times in the past. And that was just, you know, a request to make sure that happens.
Well, it's safe. That's just use, if you see a drain inlet in the street, it goes to the lake. There's an easement seven and a half feet on both sides of the center line. Go there.
Well, there's a specific one for maintenance. There's a specific lake maintenance access point.
Our community didn't have any of those because they're all associated with the drain inlets.
Now, we have...
But either way, use it. Don't use somebody's private yard.
So anyway, that's it. That's the only comments I have on it. We're excited to get this thing started and get the thing remediated and get us on par with Gateway Greens.
All right, next, we have a new resident. I see he's online, Richard Mancini. He's muted.
Yes, yes, I'm in, I live in Silver Lakes.
Okay. Did you have a question or a statement?
I just had a comment and I don't have a solution to it, but now that they've installed that roundabout, and I've only been here for several months, I don't know how to make people understand how to use it, but you have some folks who stop as they approach the circle. Some folks just speed right through it even though there's cars already in the circle. And I don't know if there's a place where people can see a memo or an email that tells them what's the protocol as you approach that roundabout?
Yeah, answer your question. I mean, I know that the county had something posted...
We have a link to the roundabout site for the Gateway Roundabouts on our website and it actually links to the county's site where they have instructions for why the roundabouts are there, how to drive in a roundabout, all of that is on their site.
Maybe we can replicate some of that, some of the best practices on our, on our Facebook page?
Oh, I could do, yeah, I could do a Facebook post, sure.
Yeah, just, here's how you drive around a roundabout. But, and some of it's just becomes experience, Richard, to be quite honest, that now that we've got two here, people that don't have any experience will, will learn. It'd probably take another three to six months, I think, before people are comfortable, but it's, I think it's, it's better month over month. It's definitely better now than it was when they first opened it up. But thank you for your comment.
Okay.
All right. And then we have Julian Cruz, who was here at the last board meeting. He was one that wanted to use the soccer fields on Sundays.
I'm sorry, one more time. I told my, my guys, he says, when I paid, do you remember the $30 per? He said, yes, but can you standard more contract for total six months?
They wanted it 27 weeks.
Yeah, we'd have to, it would have to be brought to the board. We have to vote on it. We would have to vote on it. So it would have to be on the, put on the agenda.
It would have to be an action item on the agenda. We'd have to, the board would need to vote on it because it would be basically a new contract.
So we can, if there's interest, then you need to just submit a formal request. I don't know if that's been done. A formal request, here's the amount of time that we would like to rent the field. Here's the purpose of use. And then it'll get on our, on our meeting list and we will vote on it. So not, anyone that wants to use the fields has to come through for approval.
Okay.
So if that's the case, you can work with...
Georgia.
Georgia, who I think you might have been dealing with already.
You've been talking to Georgia.
Submit a formal request.
Okay.
And then we'll vote on it at the next board meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You have gone back to your other players with what you heard the last time is that it would have a cost, correct, about 30 bucks?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, but I want to standard more my contract.
Correct. So now that there might be interest at the $30, this is what you have to do now?
Right.
To formally go forward?
Yeah. Okay. So my question is, so I pay Toro the grand total or I pay for mom?
That's up to Georgia. She'll do that. She'll give you those details.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yep.
Is the goal of making the contract 27 months so we're paying a one-time fee of $30 per player? Because even if we do 27 months, does he understand that he will pay $30 per player per month? Yeah?
27 weeks, not 27 months.
Oh, sorry, 27 weeks. Okay, never mind.
All right, who do we have up next?
That was the last one I had. Is there anyone online that, if you could send a chat? I don't see anything in the chat, but there were no other comments registered, requests for...
Proud of you, Rob.
I was surprised.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to staff reports, district council.
Yes, one update from the last board meeting. I'd like to obtain the authorization from the board to send a letter to Ford Line Inc. with regards to the meter replacement project utilizing notice provisions and demands under chapter 558.
I make the motion to authorize the attorney to submit the 558 letter to Ford Line immediately.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all you got?
Questions and...
Mr., I think Mr. Guy.
You have some time next week I can call you.
I voted no.
Flavia, you have some time next week I can call you. Just giving updates.
Are you talking in regards to FTL easement?
Yes, I mean, well, is there a time, I'll contact you about you and I talking early next week about that and then bringing it back to the board.
That's fine.
Thank you. Bill, did you vote no? Is that what I heard?
Yes, he did.
I voted no.
Okay.
He voted no, too.
I'd be happy to explain it to you if you're interested.
No, no, it's fine without an explanation. That's the no on the motion to send the letter. Normally we have discussions.
That's correct.
And just so, just doing a sound check. So Bill and Flavia, can you guys hear the boardroom okay?
It's difficult, but I can hear you.
Yeah, all right. Okay, is there any questions for, for Tony?
I'd like to ask him a question or two, if I may, since he's going to send this letter. I'd like to know what, what the, what the, what the final game plan is going to be. When we send this letter and all of a sudden we stop getting any assistance, that's not going to be much of an advantage. And secondly, if we're going to start in on a lawsuit, I'd like to know who is going to be the lead attorney on the lawsuit and who's going to be the defendants. For instance, is Tactra Tech going to be an defendant? Because they were the ones that gave us a strong recommendation that we proceed with this contract.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want this discussion in this format.
Yeah, Mr. Guy, with regards to the lead attorney, I will be and Lenore Bradfield and Zach Lombardo will be assisting me. And with regards to any lawsuit, the determination as to who the parties will be will be coming to the board in November is our recommended course of action.
And, and Bill, what I'll say is, I mean, if, if there are additional questions, you can reach out to, to Tony directly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. District engineer, we have Stephen on.
Hey, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes. Hi, Steve.
Hey, guys. Update on the agenda. We've got our task authorization update. The first item on here are the lakes, which we're going to be talking about later on. So I'll just leave that alone for now. We also have construction management and CEI tasks on here. The only lake that's outstanding for phase two, year one is Lake 93. Talked to the contractor today and they're still shooting for November, hopefully early or mid-November to start there. The flowway weir adjustments, we submitted our RAI response to South Florida. So we're just awaiting the response or issuance of a permit. At the last board meeting, we got authorization to, for a change order to design the control structure at Pond 38. So we've started that. We're working on that. And that's pretty much it for my projects. Do you have any questions about any of the other projects or any of the ones I went over?
We're going to do the review of these plans under here instead of skipping down. Do it right now while we've got Stephen on the phone.
Yeah, Stephen, if you, if you'd like, we can pull up, we can pull forward, item 3E.
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 Sure.
Yeah.
So the files were too big, so I sent them to Laura and she, she put them in a share file, I think, maybe a Dropbox for everyone to review. So yeah, I mean, do you guys have any questions or comments? Or are you just going to give you a brief overview?
Questions?
Yep.
Yeah, Steve, we talked. Do you have a pre-bid estimate for each of the ponds right now?
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see what Laura is sharing.
I'm going to blow it up.
Be blown way up.
Yeah, zoom on into that table and in the top right there.
About two more times?
Yep, I just want to get it in the center.
Thank you.
So this is an overview map of all the lakes and their location inside of Gateway. And this table shows the linear feet of the lakes to be repaired. And then there's two columns for cost. The first one is as designed and submitted to SRF. That's the set of plans that they approved, which shows the ArmorMax all the way around the lakes. The second column is an alternate where we're using ArmorMax on some of them. And then some of the lakes are like half and half. And then some of the other lakes are just no ArmorMax at all. And it's just the non-woven geotextile. The reason for that is during the process of designing these, we were still getting used to just using the non-woven geotextile. And we have pretty good confidence with that now. So I think on some of the lesser eroded lakes, that's actually a really good option to save a little bit of money instead of using the ArmorMax. You know, they're, they're all expensive options. So I'll just leave that here for now. Laura, maybe if you scroll down to the next sheet, it'll be an example of kind of a mixture of ArmorMax and other. So this is Lake 58 in Stony Brook. It's such a long lake. I mean, I think we're, we're over 8,000 feet, so over a mile long. You're going to have varying conditions of erosion on this lake. So we kind of broke it, I broke it down by areas that I found to be, you know, more needing of repair than others. And those are in yellow and those call out ArmorMax. Then the ones in blue are the other method. It still gets the rock on the other method. The only difference is you're not putting an extra layer of ArmorMax. It's just one layer of the non-woven geotextile.
So you're, by your estimate there, you are saving about 10% by going to the woven material as opposed to the ArmorMax, correct?
Yeah, so the actual linear foot cost for the ArmorMax based on last year's low bid averages and then inflated are $154 a linear foot for ArmorMax versus $128 a linear foot for the other option.
Okay. Okay. Would this be something that we would change? Do we have to go back? Let's go start all over. Do we have to go back to SRF on the facility plan to make any corrections to...
Not on the facility plan. We just need to submit, pretty much this figure here would get inserted into the plans and then just sent back to them for, you know, a quick change order review. I'm pretty sure we've done this before.
That's what I thought.
On some of the other lakes, because we had areas that were, that we weren't doing any rock and we were going to leave it for laterals. And we had actually changed the plans to, you know, show that being added back in and SRF approved that, no problems quickly, so.
Lose time because times of, of the assets here are starting the end of December or January when the lakes start dropping. So would you propose then to bid it with all ArmorMax and have a supplemental bid to incorporate the change with the filter fabric? Or would you just simply change the plans and bid it with the filter fabric and go that route and be done with it?
I would probably, you know, depending on staff review and what the board decides, go with the, you know, make the change. If everyone's comfortable with that, we can, you know, try to save some money. It's, you know, slightly lesser design, but I think it's just as robust. And, you know, in some of these cases where it's not as bad of an erosion. So, you know, it just depends on what the board wants to do.
And Stephen, if you're, if you're looking at, you know, what, what's being, there's sections where, that you've got ArmorMax and then you've got the geo, what's it called?
Filter fabric.
The filter fabric. Those are on, you know, what I'm trying to understand is what, what's, what, what's the difference between the left side that is ArmorMax and the right side that, like, what's the place?
Will lead me to that decision.
Pond. And I've walked 58 specifically. And the proposal in front of us is pretty much consistent with what I saw out there as far as need for repairs versus one product versus the other. And you look at the pitch and the washouts and all those things. And this is more in line with what, how Pelican did theirs.
Well, I guess my question is, because I, I am very familiar with, with this pond. I do know there are areas that are more severe. But is that just due to there's more washout that occurs at that location? Because if you, if you fix...
That's what usually happens. Could be wave action. It could be washout.
As I was just saying, like along this, you know, along the side, the wave action I would imagine would be pretty similar.
Could be either one of those two things. Could be bad soil.
The other difference is this is focused behind residence homes. If you notice where there's just streets and things like that, there's no activity at all.
But if you look at the picture, there's, they're all along homes.
On the residence side, when you look across the...
And there's very little difference in one home to the next.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to understand why would one section have more severity than another?
It's just the way, it's just the geography. It's just the way it lays. There's not a...
Can I, can I address something real quick? Bob just brought up, you know, there is no repair in front of the road. So it wasn't this entire board, but a previous board decision told us to not propose any repairs along the roadways or commercial development to, I believe, save cost and to just focus our efforts behind homes. So that's why you don't see repairs on the roadside.
Well, I've, I've got a real problem on the common areas. That's, that's plain down dangerous. You've got people walking along there, kids along there. You've got a better chance of kids being on the common area than you do in the backyards of people's property.
It's not allowed in Stony Brook. You can't fish behind someone's yard. You can't, you can't walk that...
Yeah. I think we need to take and nix that prior decision where you have here at Stony Brook and then Jim alluded to it in 85 and 88. We need to take and have that continuous where we have common areas. Now, if you've got, I won't, today's not the day to, to fight the battle with the country club, but the golf course, the wetlands, the conservation areas, that type of, and even the commercials, I would say, let, let's let those ride now. But man, you've got a dangerous deal right there along Pebblebrook. In fact, you even got benches over there that people can go and sit on. So that means the next thing you...
Learn how you fall off a bench into the pond.
Well, it attracts people is the point. But my thing is, is that I think we should look at those areas that are defined as common areas in those neighborhood associations or master associations and have those included in the pro, in the cost of the project. That's just dangerous doing it any other way.
And if we do that, and I'm not opposed to it, but if you do it, now you delay it. Now this has got to be re-caused.
Well, let me, let me ask you, does, does that cause you any delay, Steve?
I mean, we need to, we would have to add sheets. We would, we'd have to make changes to the plans. I mean, it's definitely going to increase our efforts for sure.
Well, I mean, just this title page and the general location map, you, you put a yellow and a blue line on it, but you're going to have to also outline a box that shows an aerial for that particular page with the detail, correct?
Yeah, I mean, updating this particular sheet's not a problem, but I mean, we have plant, we have profile sheets that are also included in the plans. I mean, it's not a massive effort. It's definitely doable. I think some of the lakes don't even have any road frontages. So it's not like all of the lakes need to be reworked. So it's not...
Do it that a way or we do it by a change order afterwards. And I don't like doing change orders at this magnitude because somebody wins and somebody loses. And usually it's we that lose. The contract wins. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
Or just redid it later. Just go back and do it, do that section if it's, you know, appropriate to do it.
Well, I, I don't think...
Totally separate.
We've, we've got the time to make the change and then get this thing out for bid and still award the contract before the second week of December. We can do that.
Are we really even trying to cut costs here? Are we trying to cut costs at all?
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm trying to save lives.
Lives that we lost in 20 years.
How many do you want to lose? I don't want to lose any. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth it.
That's motherhood language to wrap it up. We're trying to save some money.
Yeah, if we, I've, I've got a solution for that. I got a solution for that. But I would say that nix that deal that was done by a prior board. Let's go where we have common areas and look at whether it needs to be the ArmorMax or if, whether it needs to be the filter fabric based upon the combination of the escarpment and the slope. If it's a serious slope, we, that is, that's even more scary where you have the possibility of people fishing, like what Jim was alluding to over at that pond. I looked at that on the way out. That's just downright dangerous. It's just dangerous. So I would make the recommendation that we make that change. And then the other one, Bob, on, to benefit you on that, there's been a lot of talk about other alternatives. I would be for taking a pond out of, out of service here. And I would throw out and use as an example Pond 62. Let's say Pond 62 out. It's a pond that's got a requirement for laterals to begin with. And then if you can find an engineer that will certify the work I'm interested in, I'm concerned, but I'm interested in, is there an alternative? We tried this on 106, 107, 108, and it failed miserably. We did it on 104 and it failed miserably. But perhaps there is another way that has come up that we could do something short of this product if we can get an engineer that will certify it. Because if we don't get an engineer to certify it, you're not going to get SRF funding. And if you don't get SRF funding, where are we going to pay for it? And the other one is, is that if a engineer comes out with something, let's say innovative, and it fails, we're obviously going to go after him and he's going to pay for it.
Well, the other thing to discuss is how much...
So under those, under those conditions, I'd be willing to do it.
Okay. The other thing to, to talk about is how much rock do we want to come up the, the pond bank? I mean, we spent a fortune doing it. I'm talking about out of the water. Right now we come up whatever footage it is to the LEM to, what, two feet, three feet?
Well, typically what they were doing...
Excuse me, can I finish?
Yeah.
Can I finish? Okay. I think we ought to come up off the high water mark, no more than 18 inches. Because your water's not going to come up any more than 18 inches.
18 inches horizontal?
18 inches from the high water mark. You go, you, high water mark, put a roller, 18 inches and wherever that lands.
Okay, but keep, keep in mind, hold on, Bob, you're lying. This is some math involved. 18 inches on six to one is three inches of water depth. We're, we're three inches over controlled elevation all the time. So that's, I think what you want to do, what we originally talked about was going six inches up. And six inches at four to one is two feet.
Well, that's why you got the ones like out here at this pond, which are ridiculous when you have all that rock up there.
Well, this year, my, my pond this year had the water all the way over the rock, all the way over the rock. Because we were up about eight inches. And eight inches times four to one, five to one, you go up that far. So you're back, you're into the sod.
If you cut it to less, so you have water on grass for a while.
Dead sod.
But you're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, I would, I would do it, I would do it, I'd meet you halfway. I'd do it a different way. Instead of putting in the god awful amount of number of stone we put in, put in lesser thickness of stone.
Lesser thickness and lesser distance.
I'd go, certainly left, left, I wouldn't have an issue with the lesser thickness.
If we, if we do nothing, we're going to put another $8 million out there.
I think his bid's four.
Well, but we're changing it. Now we're, we're not going to go over this one area. I mean, it's going to change. We're starting to change stuff. Well, but we're changing it. Now we're, we're not going to go over this one area. I mean, it's going to change. We're starting to change stuff.
No, I mean.
Every time you change things, it's more expensive.
No, I mean, the estimate for these nine ponds, as I just read, I thought was at $4 million.
It is, but now we're changing.
Yeah, I think, I think we're changing it to reduce it.
No, you're adding footage.
Oh, oh, okay.
And once you add footage, you're talking basically 200 bucks a.
But that was a mistake, that was a mistake the last board made. We can't correct that now. Alls we can do is make sure we don't do it twice.
Again, it's all a matter of perspective. If you're trying to save money, then you got to save it. And that means something gives up. You can't have everything. And, well, you can. If you will, keep spending that money and face the residents with the next time the next pond gets put on their tax bills, this is the way to do it.
So Stephen, can you come back to us with the footage? If we add in the, the common space with the, with the, the. What is it? Filter, I can't remember. The Geo filter fabric? Yeah, the filter fabric. Because that would probably be sufficient for the common areas.
Yeah, you got, it depends. It just depends on what, it, it depends on what the escarpment is.
So can we just get an estimate of what that would look like? And in order to potentially offset that cost. Can you look at if we did either make some adjustments with the the, the, either one type of rock would be an option. And then the second option was if we didn't go three feet above controlled elevation.
And then you got to slide down to Pond 62, the one that we're just talking about it. Because that has a wide expanse also where we're not doing anything that's next to a road, next to Pebblebrook.
Same, same issue.
Same, that's right. I mean, it's the same issue. So there again, now there's more cost for that. So you got to go through every one of these in the same direction. And, you know.
Well, I, I'm just looking at it from one, the safety perspective, and then the other one is I don't think our permit differentiates that you're a bit in a commercial or you're in a common area or you're in a backyard or you're in a, a wetland.
And that's why we spent so much money the last time.
I have a question.
You got to go by the rules.
No, 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 no.
I, I do.
Yes.
I have a question. So are the areas, I'm kind of in the middle. I, I'm leaning towards Ed. Are there areas that we did not, that we're planning not to do anything near Pebblebrook or so, are those areas in compliance or not? With slope erosion, whatever it is.
The common area is in compliance today, like on Pebblebrook.
Oh, well, if it's in compliance and we don't have an escarpment, we don't have the slope issue, why are we doing anything for?
And I guess that, that, that will be my question, because if there's, if there's a compliance issue, then I believe they should be done all together because it's cheaper in the long run because they're already going to be there working, do it all once. But if there's nothing wrong with it, then I'm willing to keep it the way it is because there's nothing wrong with it. So I guess my question is for Tetra Tech.
Did you catch that, Steve? Stephen?
Hold on, sorry, I had my phone muted. So I'm looking at the survey right now for Lake 58 along, along the road there. And it looks like there are some drop offs of like 1.7, 1.5, 2.8 feet, two feet. And then there's some areas where it's only like 0.8 feet, 0.7 feet, 1.2 feet. So yeah, there's, there's definitely a little drop off ledge there, but I also think that's probably like a, a lot of laterals there too. I don't know if Elle's there, but she can probably speak to that.
Stephen, 58's a little different because that's backed up to 82, to 82, and there is no traffic. You know, there's no foot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's an area I would definitely say, don't address that.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that road. I'm sorry. I'm talking, I am specifically talking about Pebblebrook there.
No, no easy way to get there.
Yeah, so there is a drop off there along that road.
Well, I, I have no problem of going back. I, I am assuming or making the assumption that when we're designing these. If we have a continuous area that has no escarpment and has no slope issue, we aren't doing any work. I mean, but I, I've walked most ponds and for the life of me, I don't know how you get around with no escarpment. There's escarpment everywhere in Gateway. And some of it's really serious. The state makes it clear it's nine inches. If it's over nine inches, fix it. Fix it.
What's the, what's the lake on the other side of 62 that we, that we did?
Sixty, sixty, sixty or 61?
I think it's 60.
So with 60, with that area that's facing Pebblebrook, the common area, what, what did we do there?
We didn't do anything there. I think Elle has replanted a bunch of laterals there in the, pretty recently.
That was one of the previous.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we did rock or anything on there.
Yeah, I think we just finished that one. That's the one we just finished in the last couple of months, so.
Well, how long, what's the turnaround? If you come back the next meeting with those additions. What's the turnaround time then that we could be, when's our meeting, the 7th?
Yes, 7th.
If we, if we would, you would come back on the 7th with this change or these additions. Can we still be getting the bids out and received back by the end of the year?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
So the, SRF gave us permission to go ahead and bid at any time. Laura's working on the loan agreement. I think we either have until December or we can't get the loan until December. It's one of those two, but I know December's either a deadline of, of, of one kind. But they gave us permission. We can bid now. We just can't, you know, they can't start working until we get the loan essentially. But, um, yeah, I don't think these are major changes that would, you know, take us past dry season, so we can definitely work on that.
We did eight ponds in the first phase, is that correct?
We've done 20.
They were smaller, but yes, we did eight ponds.
In phase one?
Yeah, that's got right.
Phase two, year one.
And with these additional eight, what does that bring us to as a total number?
Um, hold on, I have the numbers in front of me.
I know, I'm in number of ponds.
How many ponds?
How many number of ponds? 16?
Twenty, twenty-three total with these, adding these eight.
And we got 89 ponds in the community.
Seventy-six ponds, seventy-six ponds.
Seventy-six, yeah. Which means we got another 50 and we're already running a 15, 20 million?
When we did, uh, eight years ago, the estimate was 20 to 25 million.
I was mistaken. The board meeting is the 4th.
I'm sorry.
November 4th is the board meeting.
November, November 4th?
Yes.
So that, that gives us time to do it, to come back in with the numbers and see what it looks like. I don't think you're adding as much footage as it sounds. You got the one I know over at, uh, Jim Wazanowski's at Silver Lakes. You've got the one here on, uh, well, two at Stony Brook, 62 and 58. And I don't remember the other ones, whether you have any or not. But first, I, I think there still needs to be the deal was, do they qualify that even need to be done? If they show that they meet the no escarpment problem, why are we doing them anyway?
I don't think you're going to find that at all.
I don't think you will either.
No, because nine inches, we get them.
So Stephen, you'll come back to us. What else, what else do you have? Is that it?
That's it for me.
I can't hear anything.
So Stephen, do you have any update on the land transfer for Plaza?
Road transfer.
Road transfer, I'm sorry.
Um, I know Tony's been working with a title agency, I think. Is that correct, Tony?
Uh, Stephen, I can't recall the surveying company that formed the survey. We have the sketch and legal description of the road right away. And Steven Damsec, the attorney for the association, the title committee, based upon that survey. And the survey looked fine. Double checked it as far as. So I think we're all on board with that, by recollection, Stephen, if I'm correct, authorities, to the extent and width of the, of the area to be conveyed.
It's hard to hear you, but yes, I think we are in agreeance with that.
So it's still moving forward?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
So I got a call from the contractor while they were out there like two weeks ago. And he was trying to get out of making the ADA compliant valley gutters, but they, they ended up doing them, I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure if it's been done yet, but we should probably take a look at that and make sure everything was completed correctly.
This is Joe Schofield with P-PAC. I talked with Mike Lampier and the, the ADA compliance is being done. They fixed the gutters along the road. They're getting that road coded, I think, later this week. I think they've invested about $40,000 in that road to get it up to speed for us. And what I'd like to be able to do is go to P-PAC and, and say, let's move forward and close this out. Tony, you're saying that we're still waiting on their attorney to provide some document?
No, the, their attorney could not order the title commitment until such time as we had a legal description of the property to be conveyed.
And we do have that now.
Correct. And my understanding is Steven Damsec is in the process of ordering that. So Stephen is right on board with everything.
Okay, now I have a copy of that survey which was, was sent out. Is that all we're waiting for?
No, we have the survey and it's been provided to Mr. Damsec. I believe Stephen, I think Steven Damsec was on all those emails. He was fine with it, to my understanding.
Yep.
That mean that we could just, at the next P-PAC meeting, say we accept that, that land transfer and move forward and close it out?
I don't know. After Mr. Damsec gets the title work, he'll provide that to me along with the proposed deed and other necessary documents. I'll review it and then place it, come, take it to P-PAC and then take it to the board.
I, I think you have to do a lot split. I don't know if, I think that might be the city of Fort Myers last to review that, but the little side streets are attached to that parcel and they have to get split off, so there's probably going to be some, I could be wrong, but I think there's going to be review time for the city of Fort Myers or Lee County.
Yeah, it might be Lee County and whether or not it's city of Fort Myers or not is one of the questions I raised. We have for Pelican Reserve, fortunately, there, that special development area, a set of regulations that provides the ability for certain deviations from their code requirements upon approval of the Pelican Reserve, I think, Design Review Committee. I think I pointed it out in one of the emails, Stephen.
Yeah.
And so that process might need to be undertaken by the association, but I just raised that issue. And again, Mr. Damsec is in the process, as I understand it, of ordering the title work.
Okay, so I'll, I'll tell Mr. Lampier then that he needs to.
I think, I think Mr. Lampier has been on most of the emails. I'll double check, Joe, I think.
Yeah, I, I know that Phil Meezy asked that, that you can include me on all those emails also. Because I'm the contact person for that.
Okay.
But I guess we're looking at another month or so before we can.
Yeah, and the key issue is whether what the city of Fort Myers comes back with as far as any hoops we have to jump through. They have, the responsiveness has been interesting. We'll put it that way.
Okay.
And other issues.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Well.
Thank you so much.
Let's go back. Steve, can you pull up 79, please? Whoever's controlling 79. It's down by Daniels Preserve.
Just trying to get to the right page.
And, and this is a question for probably, yeah, 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 there you go, right, right there.
This, this one?
No, no.
That's it.
There you go, right there. Tony, whose responsibility is it to be maintaining the LMEs? Are property owners and be even commercial owners, are they allowed to turn that into a jungle, the LME?
If the lake maintenance easement is dedicated to the district or the district has it, if it's under the permit. It's just obligation, in my opinion, to maintain it to be able to provide the necessary access to do the lake maintenance.
Exactly my point. What's, what's going on down there is if we got a entity that doesn't understand the King's English or have we just let it go? What are we doing to tell that entity that owns that 20-foot strip that's the full length of that lake? Because I went down there, I started to go into it. I didn't have a machete and if I had one, I wouldn't have gone in. That needs to be, that needs to be cleaned up. Who, who do we go, who do we go to and tell them, send them a letter indicating, and, and they're not the only one. There's others around the community, same thing. You go over there and that, on Gateway Boulevard and go down that five and a half, six, eight or parcel that's the triangular one, ready for development. You couldn't get down that LME if your life depended on it. Why, why are we allowing these people to get away with that? And that's again, that's, that's our nickel. Make them go spend their nickel to do it. That's their job to maintain that. That's not ours. I know if I went out in my backyard and I allowed all kinds of exotics to grow, I'd get, I bet I'd get a letter.
So Tony, is there, uh.
The silence is overwhelming.
Well, it's not behind a main, you know, a resident's home. And I hear what you're saying. You know, it's down to the, who really cares? There's nobody using it. It's just sitting there.
If we need to get in there to do it, will somebody?
In 20 years, apparently, no one's gotten in now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my point is, is, is why?
Well, it is, but it'd be a waste of money to put an LME in there. The ease there.
You know, the LME is there. It's the issue.
Clear it and maintain it.
Yeah, and, and, and to me is, is, I, I don't believe it's our responsibility. I believe it's the owner's responsibility.
We've been, I know that Jim was working with Flavia and they were going around, there was some other areas where there's property that we didn't own that we had been maintaining, where stuff was really overgrown and we actually requested of the owners of those properties to.
The owner should be done.
We did, and I know that they, they've been working on that. I'm not sure if, if this is on the list, but I'll make sure that this gets added to that list.
I'd like to have it the next, uh, opportunity, that's too quick for the next meeting, but the meeting after that, when we get our lake report. Let's have an LME report of the ponds that have problems that need to have owners be given notification.
It's a problem simply because it's not being maintained?
Oh, it's a joke. You can't get in there.
I may have a question. Is that why it's a problem?
It's, it's a horrible, yeah. We have to get in there. Right now, as I understand it, we have a broken pipe in there. I don't know how in the hell you're going to get in there. You'd have to have a skyhook. If you pan up just a little bit, you can see the pipe section. Kind of hard to see it from here.
This way?
Well, I can see the one pipe. That's very.
This way?
Yeah, drag it to your left.
And that's, that's, I think, our responsibility to maintain that, but I don't know how in the heck we get in there to do it. Yeah, there she goes. I think that's our job to go in there and get to it. Lots of luck.
Well, I don't want to spend money.
Laura, just to add, the areas that I, I was working with Jim, they did not include this area. But I am a firm believer that those, you know, the people that own should be the one maintaining it. And, and if they can, if they're out of compliance, I know some were issues with, you know, the exotic have exceeded the permit requirement. And I believe Chris sent the email. It was really to the point and simple was send a certified letter to the homeowners or the property owners. Let them know that there's an issue. And if they don't comply and if they're out of compliance with the amount of exotics, then report them to the county. I was disappointed that Jim did not follow Chris's direction a few times on that. And eventually, I believe, we again paid for two areas, which I believe was on Gateway Boulevard. To maintain and remove some of those exotics and, you know, just the LME and, and stuff like that. But I would like for Jim to go back to Chris's email and follow his direction and just include this and any other pond that the LME needs to be, you know, addressed.
I totally agree. It's, it's no nickel out of our pocket other than the stamp.
Well, and I think what we need to do too is, I think we need to be, almost provide a roadmap of what needs to be done. Because these people that own this property, they don't have any, they don't have any expertise. And we tell them to clean something up, what are they going to do?
Hire somebody, just like what we do.
But.
But give them the parameters is what you're saying. This is what we expect to be done.
Here's what, here's what needs to be done. Here's, we're telling you, give this to a contractor, you pay for it. It's like cleanup if it's whatever. But I don't think just sending a letter telling them they're out of compliance and they need, they need to clean it up, they're going to go, okay. Do I just hire someone, have them just wipe it out? I mean, that's.
Get some college hunk with rakes for an afternoon.
Well, the, the big one is, is to, to let them know and everyone that's like them know that they are in non-compliance. We're running a business here, people. You don't allow this. It's, it's not right. We don't look the other way. We have looked the other way for so damn long around here, we forgot what the hell we're doing. It's our job to do this.
So Elle, this would be a, a great opportunity to get your assistance on this. So if you're out doing ponds and you see an area that isn't under our jurisdiction, but looks like it hasn't been maintained or it might cause an issue, just to make a list of those so we can coordinate efforts to at least notify the, the owners. To either remind them that they're, it's their responsibility or two, if it's severe, give us some direction on, on what needs to be done. So if you wouldn't mind just adding that to your report, that'd be great. Okay.
Okay, before we leave, one last question for, for Stephen. The multimodal path for the west of Tree Line community. They're, they're putting in walls over there, but I don't see anything about a multimodal path on it. This is on Tree Line Boulevard. This is on Tree Line Boulevard.
West side of the road.
Yep, west side of the road.
What is it, eight foot?
It should be an eight-foot multimodal path. That's what's in the DRI.
And they haven't done it yet?
I don't even know where they put it at. They're building a wall now, so I don't know, I don't know if there's enough room. If they tried to do it on one side, they gotta take out all the trees. If they did it on the other side, they're in a ditch. So Tony, I guess the question for you is, what is this parcel of land developer's responsibility? Because I don't think he has to do all of it from Colonial Boulevard to, to Pelican Preserve Boulevard, but he certainly has that portion of it-
Was that where the crossover?
That he's developing. Well, Pelican's gonna be responsible from the, the red light down to meet up with wherever this development starts. And they're gonna have to do their portion, but then there's some other parcels of land and I assume that the owners, when they develop it, will have to continue the multimodal path. But I don't wanna come to the 11th hour and say, well, there's no room to do it. We've talked about this a couple of times. I wanna make sure that it's there. We all get some plans.
Yeah, I guess it- How do they get across the street?
My, my understanding is it's a DRI development order issued, not per se a district issue, but it is issued from the city of Fort Myers. I guess the question would be a query to the city of Fort Myers that what approvals have been provided for W side to develop the property? The, it's a C5 property, I guess I take it?
Yeah.
And what requirements or commitments were required to be made or what development needed to be undertaken for the multimodal path in conjunction with that C5? Just ask the city staff that question.
Well, I don't know who to ask, but I'm asking you or Stephen. Somebody needs to do it.
And it shows up there.
No, Laura, I can't see where they're gonna put it. That's what's concerning. I'll send the request and copy, Stephen, and Laura on it. I'll make the-
They're, I'm looking at their plans right now. They have, they're just calling out a sidewalk along the, the front edge of the property.
That is not correct. The DRI calls-
That's what their plan show.
Well, then whoever in, in our organization needs to challenge that, engineering or legal, let's get to it sooner rather than later. Stephen, can you send me a copy of those plans and highlight or excerpt that part dealing with the sidewalk?
Yeah, sure. It's, it's just a sidewalk shown in the right of way. I can highlight it and, and send it to you.
Yes, and also, do you have any of the reviewers' names or comments on there, if any wild chance or not?
Hmm, if I find them, I'll let you know.
I appreciate it. Is this a city?
Yes.
That's, yeah. Yeah, you know what you're looking for.
Well, they built it wrong on our side, on the east side. Then they had to go back there and all put it in the other.
Now's, now's the time to break it up.
That's, that's right. That's good, right, to do it at the beginning. Thanks, Stephen.
Okay. Great. Anything else for engineering? Okay, district management reports. Laura, we'll start with you.
Okay, Stephen did mention, I am working on the loan application. I have it filled out with the exception of the financial part, which I sent it off to Stephen Bloom this afternoon and asked him to have that done so I can bring that to the next board meeting. Reminder that there is a president's council meeting on Tuesday, November 2nd. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 and it's at Stony Brook. We do have it posted on our Facebook page and Georgia hung some signs up and we gave Tim some stuff to post at the pool. I have a document for Doug to sign for the, the engineer's extension of their contract. On July 15th, the board voted to extend the contract, amend and extend the contract for an additional year since the engineering contract expired at the end of September. I have all the documents here, they just need to be signed.
Real, really quick, do we have topics for the president's council?
No, Georgia said she was waiting to get that from you.
Okay. For supervisor comments, I'll give you guys a little bit of time. Just to be thinking about if there's any, any input on that, any topics for president's council. We don't need to discuss it now, we'll save it for comments. Go ahead, Laura.
And that's really been it. There's just been a lot of things, a lot of moving parts in the background. Did you wanna talk about the org chart now or later?
I was gonna hit something else before you went to that, but I, I got a phone call earlier while I started to go backwards about four months with these roundabouts. When I saw the one that was going on down at Commerce Lakes Drive wasn't enthused with the view, the look that that roundabout promotes for Gateway. Needs a lot to be desired. Looks, looks like something you'd put over in Lehigh. So I started complaining about it. May have worked. Cecil came back and said that the county is willing to pay the $100,000 to $150,000 in engineering fees and the cost of construction of building a fountain at the Commerce Lakes, or I'm sorry, at the Griffin Drive Gateway Boulevard.
So the new roundabout that they're gonna build?
The new roundabout. They will build, engineer and build a fountain. The proviso is that we will agree to maintain it. And I thought unless there is something here that not aware of, we'd be crazy not to accept that.
The historical memorial fountain.
I, I don't like that one part of that. No, I, I think it'd be something, that, that look that's down there right now is just-
It's very plain.
It's basic, very basic. And they're not gonna do anything else other than that. And if they're willing to pay for the engineering-
So clearly, they were trying to save-
I'm sorry?
Clearly, they were trying to save-
They were trying to save money.
I, I think, I think what this whole thing is, is trying to save face is what it is, but if they're willing to do that, I think we should take advantage of it.
I agree.
Well, so how do we get something?
Cecil just wants to know that the district would be willing to do it, pass that on and he'll go with it.
So they'll, they'll, they'll engineer it, they'll build it, we just have to maintain it.
Yes.
Yep. I don't think there'd be any problems. If you wanna let Cecil know that we're game.
Okay, and then the other one, lost, but blackout. Oh, yeah. I don't know to what extent we get involved in this redistricting, but we've been asked to get our people to be aware of the impacts of this redistricting that's being talked about with county commissioners. Unfortunately, they're having a big meeting the same night at 6 o'clock that we have our workshop with the presidents from 4:00 to 6:00. But Cecil asked if people could get down there. He and the other commissioner really support, I think it's Plan 5. We're in the paper today, I believe. Saw it somewhere anyway today, but I don't know to what extent we get into that, but it could be a major issue for Gateway.
I did get a call from, from a resident asking me where Gateway stood with all of it and they said, we can't, I can't do it on it. So we can request that people, we, we can't.
I can, that, district, that's not a district issue per se, but I think it's, the district could post something on their website and just say, you know, if anybody's interested, this process is underway. Lee County Commission is gonna meet on such a date.
That would help.
Here are the maps. If you want to locate, find your location, look at these maps. If you have any comments, contact your county commissioner.
So why don't we do this? Because I think this is a big-
It's big, it's big, really big deal.
Let's move the president's council meeting. Let's, let's push it, you know, push it back. So if those that want to go and support absolutely can, because I, I think that's a small, a small concession to make for the support that we have been gotten and hopefully will get in the future, so.
Our, our, our voice will just shrink to nothing if it goes to the plan that's being talked about. We're, we're gonna be a minnow in the ocean.
Really?
Yeah.
That's what you're changing.
Yep.
So to Tony's point, so we could post it on our website?
Yeah, sure.
And we could post it on our Facebook page?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I can get on the website if it's ADA compliant. I can for sure post it on the Facebook page. Can you just confirm with me, double check and make sure that I promote the correct zone or the one that Cecil's asking for before I post it?
Can you have Cecil send her any information?
I'll just forward what he said to me.
Okay, and I'll get that, I'll get that up there tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
And then about the second meeting, I'll slide to what? Gonna go, forward to the president's meeting or post? That was the conference.
We're gonna move the president's meeting.
We'll move the president's meeting. We'll just push it back, you know.
To the ninth or something.
Because I know I'm, I was hoping to go to that deal with the commissioner.
Yeah, and what I would suggest is that make it clear on that. We have the posting in the Facebook page and the district website that any comments that individuals have, make them to the county commissioner.
Sure, they can post on our Facebook page anyway.
No, but just make sure, otherwise we might get emails to the board members.
Yeah, 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 we wanna go to the commissioner.
Correct.
Yeah, not to us.
Got it.
And you may even wanna put the commissioner's email addresses on there too.
I think the, the, the deal that was forwarded to me has all that in it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now you, if you wanna go to the org chart, that's fine.
Yeah, what was, is there, we could talk about the org chart, I wasn't sure exactly.
Unless you wanna just have it pondered, we can talk about it next time. I can make-
Yeah, I mean, did you have anything specific you wanted to talk about?
On the org chart? No, I, I think it looks like it's in real good position. You've gone back and added a couple of highlights and names to fill out the deal, but it, it looks like what I envisioned, that the original intent of when we were with Joe Di Servo, notwithstanding the fact that the change has now been adding the assistant district manager and I think this incorporates all that.
My only comment that I have on this is Bill Shaw, he's much more than an electrician right now. That's pretty much taken a back, back road to his role. He's doing a lot of major, major project work for Kenny. So I would like, if I, my recommendation would be like a dotted line to Public Works because he did, we've been outsourcing most of our electrical work. Bill works with the companies that come in, but he is not our, he's not doing our electrical work for us.
Well, I mean, you guys, you guys manage the, you know, the, you know, some of the, the org chart, anything that's what I consider second or third tier. So if you need to make a couple changes, you could just come back.
Yeah, the reason I put Bill is because Bill reports both to Kenny under the utilities and he has the street lighting. So he goes both ways between Public Works and Utilities.
Yeah, I mean, this is somewhat, once you get, once you get to second, second, third level, it, it should be somewhat organic. Because things are gonna change and, so the one thing I just wanna make sure we have clarity on is, we have three vacancies.
Four with the open utilities spot.
We have, technically, well, so we have, let's just make sure we're clear on what vacancies we have. District manager, business manager, public works manager. What's the other one?
We have a open, you have one open spot on utilities. We have three, three open spots on utilities.
And Kenny's got several utility positions open. And these are all actively open and we're pursuing?
We're, yeah, they're, all the jobs are posted.
Okay, and again, I think there could be some discussion.
Well, once we have, and we're gonna be talking with Premier here shortly, I'd like to reserve that until they get in, take a look at it and make a recommendation. Because right now, I think in the interim, we, I don't see any reason that we need a public works person to look over landscape and pools.
I am, I'm in agreement that part of having a consultant come in would be to help us continue to evaluate and evolve, but just so we're clear, we do have these-
And we might tweak it.
To clarify, the, the public works manager position is not posted at this time.
Okay, and I think we're okay with that for now, but it is a position that is vacant.
Correct.
We're not actively pursuing it backfill at this particular time. Okay, all right. Okay, if there's no further, Laura, do you have anything else for you or can we move on?
No, that was all I had, thank you.
Who's, who's gonna handle the issue of the Daniels Preserve emergency work order? Were you gonna bring that up?
The easement?
The work.
Oh, the work. I, I just got those quotes today.
I know.
I sent, I sent them to you so you could see them.
And, but my point was is that we went, when we were talking the other day, we wanted to verify whether or not we could declare this as an emergency. Use MRI and get working.
About, it depends on which way we go. It would either be 180 if we go with the-
It'd be 225 plus or minus if we go with all three.
If we go with the 30 inch, which makes, which I would recommend that we do the 30 inch. It is, so.
Right.
No, it'd be 225.
All right, hang on a second.
Well, but that wasn't the issue. The issue is can we declare it as an emergency so as not to do bidding and go with this contractor to get this work done because it is an emergency.
The pipes are blocked. They're currently not working.
If the board has articulated legitimate basis for the need to waive the bidding requirements in the district's rules, that's what you would do.
Well, the engineer came in and his deal was that he would definitely recommend that we would use MRI to go and do that work.
Yeah, and they're very worried about the, the-
So my thing is that we, if we can declare it as an emergency, save time of designing, because we have to do a whole set of plans and specs, it'll pay a lot of money for the engineering, whereas if we go the other way-
They're ready to go. Yep, they're ready to go because they were, they were there. They were the ones that had the divers in the water.
You could send me that email and I'll look at that while you're discussing the other items.
Sure, I'll forward you the quote.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm gonna take care of it before the end of the meeting.
That was all.
That's one, this is one, I don't like doing it this way, but we've got an emergency down there.
Is this a reasonable cost? I have no idea what it's going to be.
It looked very good to me.
I, I thought it was very reasonable, so.
What I would suggest, Laura, is if you could have some, Georgia, print everything out and then bring it to the board members and then after we take care of some other items-
Yeah, she doesn't have, I have it, I'll print it out.
It's very complicated, tight construction, immensely tight, putting pipes in between houses.
And we're actually putting pipe on top of pipe because we can't go down where the pipes are buried under the ponds.
All right, so we'll come back to that. Laura, can I move to Kenny?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kenny.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility director. The first part of this, and I apologize for it being as long as it is, I have not had a, gotten up in front of you all. And the first part of it with the Lee County Utility Meeting, we've pretty much already gone over. I just wanted to touch on one specific point, which is their five and seven-year plan. They said that it could extend into a 10-year plan. They currently have a reserve capacity with the city of Fort Myers and as the work goes on in, at Colonial Boulevard and 75 and Daniels Parkway and 75, once they're done with all of that, they are planning on taking that reserve capacity that is going to the city of Fort Myers and are wanting to push it here to this plant. And that is, as they said, five to seven, more likely 10 years down the road, five years being the absolute minimum. But that is going to substantially increase the flows at the wastewater treatment plant here at Gateway, which is a good point to us, but it can get us into a situation where we are, we are obliged to get rid of all of that reclaimed water. And we are currently now sitting at about 1.5 million a day. With the Timber Creek and the new development in front of the airport and the airport extension, we're looking at an even bigger increase. So once that hits, and it's already starting to hit with Timber Creek, we're gonna get a, into, we could possibly get into situations where we have too much reclaimed water. I don't know how that would work itself out, but that is coming down the road as they explained it to us. I didn't get a chance to go over that, but that is a significant development farther down the road because the reserve capacity is going to the city of Fort Myers now. And once all the work is done and they're kind of, in the kind of the same situation we are with the roundabouts and having to redirect pipes and redo their, their network, but their plans are to stop paying the city of Fort Myers for that Um, but their plans are to stop paying the city of Fort Myers for that and then send it directly to the Gateway Plant, which is going to significantly push up the.
I, I have no, no problem with that. More is, more is better. Our issue is then we can always turn around and resell it if we need it. But at this point in time, it's reuse.
We don't have a limitation on reuse. That would be a significant development if it does.
Yeah, we can go three, four days of watering if we want to then. Cause it's reuse. We don't, we aren't under any restrictions. So I like the flexibility. If they want to take that plant to six million gallon a day, have at it.
It would trigger an expansion as well.
Yeah, we'll need water.
And we would get another tank.
I might make some of this, uh, uh, water use projects that, that we're doing, some null and void.
Well, what it might, what it might do is the one that goes up the FPL easement to where we would be able to dump water, especially in summertime with high rain. And that water, the wastewater plant is just going to keep coming.
Yeah, it never stops.
We've got to have a way to get rid of it.
That will get, yeah, that's another, another good point where you get into the summertime and everything flips where we go and not have enough. And now we've got too many, too much. Uh, but that is a significant development farther down the road on their master plan. Um, and, and the Worthington community, uh, we sat down with everybody on the Worthington side and went over everything. Um, and, and this one is just, it's such an oddball in the way it's going to work or how it's going to play out because the water, the sewer and the irrigation all have all kinds of riders on them. Um, the sewer connection, which would be the sewer force main, uh, would be the FPL connection. That's where it would be connected to. Uh, Lee County's all for it. They don't have any issue with that. Um, the Worthing, the Worthington folks were, were more interested in connecting on Daniels Parkway, which, yeah. We didn't talk about that, but I told them they were free to go ahead and ask them if they could. Uh, irrigation, um, they're, they were planning or wanting to put a well in. Uh, and they were kind of gauging me for how, how feasible that would be. Um, all of us, they were, they were asking that, uh, that would be, have to come in front of the board for something like that.
Just opposed to it. No way they're gonna do that.
Or they could tie it in, tie it into the, the district's irrigation system, master meter it. Um, and then the potable water, uh, they were definitely interested in master meter. And I put a, a little, a rider down there, uh, cause I wanted to, uh, go over Royal Greens. Uh, Royal Greens has gone over, got, have gotten a new management company and new cams. Um, and they had some repair work on their water system that they needed to have done. And they contacted us to just go ahead and turn the water off. And we, you know, no, we can't just turn the water off. It's a master metered community. So once we turned the water off, we shut the whole show down inside that community. Um, and we gave them guidelines that, that, you know, you need to go through these steps to do it. And it turned into a complete train wreck is what, what happened. Um, everybody was, was complaining, everybody, uh, the, the sampling, the, the community notice was an issue. Uh, the resident complaints were, were through the roof. Uh, they were contacting us. They were contacting the Department of Health. They were contacting Lee County. Um, they did the work on a Wednesday afternoon. Uh, they had planned, I believe for a four to six hour shutdown and it turned into like a, a 12 hour shutdown. So they didn't get the water back on in time. And they did it on a Wednesday. So when you do that, and I don't think they were, believe they were aware of it. Um, you have to have back tea sampling. You have to have the Department of Health sign off on your, on your samples. And you gotta have two complete days of, of, of clear tests. So there was no way they were going to get the tests in and have the boil water notice lifted on, uh, by Saturday. And then it dragged into Tuesday and then the Department of Health started contacting me directly, uh, wanting to know what was going on out there. And I, as I explained to them that it's a master metered community. And it's, as far as the Department of Health is concerned, it's a private community and they cannot, they're, they can't govern them. But they made it very clear that they could, they could enforce us because we are the provider for them. So when the back tea reports were coming in, they were incomplete. Um, and we dragged into, uh, Wednesday afternoon. And the Department of Health contacted me again and said, look, you need to go out there and go over the, the back tea reporting procedures with them. And the, the contractor they hired was Roto-Rooter. And I don't know, they had any idea what was going on. And it was obvious when they did the, turned the paperwork in, they had no idea what was going on. So, uh, meet us, our position is to master meter community. We shut the water off. And that's about as far as we're going to go. Well, as far as Department of Health goes, no, that was not the case. So I ended up having to go out there anyway. And going over their back tea reports and, and showing them how to fill them out. And this is what needs to happen. Um, and, and as a part of Worthington, when they're really interested in doing it in a master metered community. So legally, we would need a rule or have a rule for a master metered community that they would give them the guidelines, you know, boil water notice, cautionary boil water notice, sampling procedures. Before we go and shut their water off, they've got to fill out every check and make sure that this is all in place.
Why don't we just?
The Department of Health is going to.
But I think under the rules, the district has a choice to say no master meter, by recollection. I, I'll double check.
Can you do that even if there's precedent of master, of a master meter?
I think that's the only community that's like that.
That is the only community we can argue for this master meter.
I'm saying we could, we can create a policy or, or standard that says.
I think it's already there. I think the rule already says that the person can ask for the district to say no, or vice versa. I think it's already there. I'll double check that.
And we did say no first. We said, well, you, you need to follow all these procedures and they, they.
I mean, no, as far as not being a master metered community for potable water, we don't want to. I believe that's in the rules already.
Yeah, well, yeah. But the, the problem is, is that when they went ahead and did this, they just made, it was just.
I'm talking about Worthing. No, we're talking about Worthington.
Oh, for Worthington, well, yeah.
Providing direction to Worthington that we would not approve a master meter community for them.
You know, what we may want to do is add to our rates, fees and charges schedule when we do, add a section dealing with of the processing of costs to the district for handling the, uh, shutting down of our master meter community. Yeah, I think we need, if you can work with Les and get some numbers for that, we can put that as a new fee that district support staff to assist and you know, anything after shutting down. And that way we recover the cost directly and not spread it among the other users. And I'll double check the utility rule. I think the district can say no master meter. I believe.
And I think it should be significant enough that would require them to do the due diligence on the front end and not use those as a fallback.
Yeah. And Kenny, I'm sure will come up with the right appropriate number and adjust it for the aggravation factor.
Yeah. Well, the, the, the Department of Health was, was not at all happy about this, the way it went down. And we, luckily when, when they came to Leslie and me and Leslie talked about it, we provided them a checklist and said, these are the procedures that need to happen before you do this. And, and they said, you know, okay, well, they could say whatever they want, but when we shut them down, they, it just went out the window.
Well, I think, I think the next time that may want to do before they do that, we have an agreement in place.
Right. That's, that's, that's what we need, we need an agreement.
We have a standalone agreement saying, okay, we agree, we'll terminate the service for you to do such and such. Here's what you are going to do. And you give us a deposit. I don't think that needs to be in the rule. I think it's just a matter of, we're not going to cut it off until you come to the table.
Yeah. And that, that's basically what the Department of Health was, was pushing us. We're like, this, this, this can't happen like this.
And in the meantime, if you and Leslie can come up with some numbers that are appropriate in the scope. So we, we have a rate hearing, we can toss that in there.
Yes. And then, and on the same token, the, the fire suppression system, the FTC connections, we go through this every year with Royal Greens. The fire, the fire hydrants and the, and the FTC connections for the, the apartment complexes are separate. So we have to go in and shut, uh, water mains down, but it doesn't shut the community down. And on, on, on the Worthington side, I kind of made that apparent to them that when you shut down, you're not shutting down the, the, the fire hydrant system. Uh, you can't do that. So you get into, uh, cost issues because now the, the water mains have to be separated for the household, the way Royal Greens is. Royal Greens is just a mess. Uh, the way that was designed and the, and the fail, it was phasing, it, it's a mess. But we go through this every year with Royal Greens because of their FTC connections. And they have to have them inspected and repaired and maintained. And they could never figure out how to turn them off. It, it just turns into a mess. But when they shut the community down, oh, we just had mass complaints and ended up in my lap whether, anyway. So we would definitely need to, uh, look into having that, uh, a rule for them when they want to shut their community down. Uh, the water use permit, um, we had, went through this for about a year, a year and four or five months, I think total, going back and forth with Swift Mud uh, about getting these water table, uh, wells onto our permit and off of the golf course permit, which is zero, zero, six, seven, seven. Uh, and we never, we really did not have a high degree of confidence that this would ever happen, but it did. They agreed to it. They put a lot of, of riders onto it. But this, this is a, a great thing for us. It adds a third water source. We will have the lower Hawthorne, the sandstone, and now the water table. There are some provisions for it, but this would, what myself and Chris Schumaker were envisioning was using these water table wells to help dilute the lower Hawthorne. Because we have such a huge allotment of the water of the lower Hawthorne, but we have chloride riders to go along with it. With the water table, the chlorides are so low that we could virtually mix the two together and, and use much more of the lower Hawthorne with these. Um, and it did, they did come back with, uh, we will need to three, three additional pyzometers, uh, with a landscaping plan. And.
What's a, what's a pyzometer?
It, it measures the, the depth. And what we have three already. And, and what they, what we have three already in the field. And when we got our, our, our lower Hawthorne well allotment greatly, uh, expanded, they made us put these in there. So and it's in the water table within that 10, first 10 to 15 feet. And they put a rider on that. So it's a hundred and fifty parts per million for the chloride on those pyzometers. So we would have to add three more, which would give us six. Uh, the total acreage changed. Um, and the water table, with the water table monthly, we would get 21 million gallons extra a month out of that. But they put a rider in there that we, if we run it for 30 days, we have to have 30 days. So if I run it for five days, they've got to have five days off. And we can only run it nine days of the year. So my, and what we originally envisioned was from March, April and May, when we get really dry and the water gets really, really scarce. We have such a huge allotment out of the lower Hawthorne well that we can mix these two together, independent of the sandstone. Or if we lose a sandstone or, or if we lose two, we can use the water table. And we also got a, a, uh, we didn't get it into the permit, but we got within a two-year plan, if we ever got into an emergency situation, we can get that 90-day allotment extended. Uh, so it, it's a good thing. It's going to take a lot of work to get these operational online, uh, and all the workups that we're going to have to do to do it. But in the long run, this could really, really help us in, in the long run, especially with the lower Hawthorne. And we have a second lower Hawthorne that's, that we're in the preliminary stages of putting in. So it, it's a really good thing. Honestly, me or Chris, I, I did not believe this would happen because it's a water table. But they, they went ahead. We, we did get it through. And then on the other side of things, um, I just wanted to show you that. This is a 51-page report. This is our lead and copper. We memorialize this, put it on the shared drive. Austin and Nolly did this with Leslie. Uh, it's 51 pages. So this will be there forever. When we get to lead and copper, we have to do it every three years. Um, and we have it from A to Z. Everything that, that we, anyone would need to know about it is there. So this is a really good thing. Uh, this, this lead and copper is extremely comprehensive and it takes up a lot of time. So we've got, we've got it memorialized. It'll be on our shared drive hopefully forever. So it will be there. Um, the, I guess it was the storage trailer facility back there, uh, that we were using. We've kind of used, we've, we've started to use, use that for training. Um, we've prioritized training our field staff as best we can. So what we came up with was using that field back there. Um, and then digging holes, getting our operators into the ground and start working over, uh, major repairs, tappings, gate valves, everything.
Are, are you putting test piping back there?
Yep.
So you're, you're mimicking field conditions. That's, that's really.
And they get on our machine. Um, and if I had a Volkswagen Beetle, I'd bury that under the pipes just to mess with them. We're putting cable in there, pipes, anything we can to, to mess them up. So if, if you're going to hit a, an electrical line, that's where you're going to do it. So we, what our long-term plans on, it will be to tap well five. And then extend 20 feet, pressurize that line and then let them train in real time. So if you do a repair, you can actually see if it's, if it's working. Um, something along those lines.
Does the county have a training area like what you're?
Not, not to my knowledge. Um, um, and I was gonna extend the invite to them too. If they got, you know, a green staff or anybody, they would like to train. We can give them, you know, a really good safe spot to go out there and, and train.
That's a fantastic idea.
Uh, so we, we, and tomorrow is our training day. So we're going to try to do it every Friday as best we can to go out there and, and get our staff as trained to the, to the nines as we possibly can. Um, the pole barn that we budgeted, um, I talked to Steven. He's going to come up with a task order to come back to do all the engineering or just to give us out here, uh, what we can do, what we can't do, what it's all going to look like. Uh, he should, I don't know when he's going to come back with that order, with that task order. But, uh, we did have a conversation the other day about that. So we'd like to get that moving as fast as we can. Uh, same with the climate controlled, climate controlled storage building back at the pump house. We'll be, uh, going after that. And Commerce Lake's force main break, uh, our district attorney cursed me at the beginning of the last meeting, talking about water main breaks. Within five minutes of me sitting down, we had a, a force main break. Uh, up on Commerce Lakes. Thank you, Tony.
I would never use that phrase ever again. Sorry to interrupt Kenny Hall.
Uh, it was, it was a relatively quick repair, but it, it, say again, we have to be prepared. We had a, we have a plan in place. We have a on-call MRI. It was our emergency factor. I mean, they were there within a half an hour. We had the whole thing sorted out within an hour and a half. So, uh, it, our, our plans did work. And then another thing that I, I wanted to go over was the dump trailer. Um, every time we're doing a repair, especially in the summer months, at four feet, you're hitting water. It's just, it's a fact of life. And, and anytime you're doing any kind of main repair, we have to embed it in, in rock. And the way we do it is we have trash cans. It's rock and we have to fill them up and they dump them in there and there's never enough. So at our last, at our last, uh, when we, we were, we're working on a main, we rented a trailer, a dump trailer. And it, it, it seemed to work really well. And we're, we're renting one for tomorrow to give them some, you know, to work on it, to work with it. Um, but we're looking to, uh, to buy one. Um, I will, will come back with a proposal and give you some pricing, but, uh, this, if we're going to be doing all the main repairs, anything, anything really in the summertime requires rock, whether it's a meter, whatever it is, uh, requires rock. And we get into this situation where we're running back and forth with 50 gallon drums of rock. Um, and so a dump trailer would make sense for us in our operation.
Now, do you need a, is it, you need a dump trailer or do you need?
It's a hydraulic. It's a hydraulic dump trailer.
Yeah, I know, I know what it looks like because I've just pulled it up. Uh, but I'm curious, can you get spaces of that dump trailer? Or do you also need like a, or, because we have a, a small excavator, right? But we don't have a bobcat, right?
No, no.
Is it a two yard or a five yard?
Well, the one we're eating tomorrow is five.
Five yard?
Yeah. Six thousand pound pass.
Does that really, uh, limits where you can go when you get to the five?
Right. And that was my.
That's what I was thinking. You know, you got a dump trailer, but that's, if you can't get into spaces, you almost need a bobcat or something.
The golf course was putting in all the sand and all the bunkers. And they were having a five take loads to the tube, transfer it to take it out on the course and then tear up everything.
Right.
But you do a lot more trips with the two.
Yeah. What's that? It's almost like a little dump truck that they have.
It's like a turn rocker. You can turn it this way. You can turn it this way and then lift it up and down.
And with the, with the smaller version that we used last time, we were able to maneuver it with the excavator, take it off and then maneuver it around to where we needed it and then, and then move it. So it, it, that was my biggest concern was how, how, you know, and you're in, in Stony Brook would be a great example. How are we, how is that going to look? But we could, we could make that work. And, uh, that was.
Just out of curiosity again, I don't want to spend a lot of time. Our excavator, it's just a single-use tool. You can't, uh, it's not one of those that you can.
Dig a hole.
Yeah, you don't, you.
We can use it to break concrete. When we bought the machine, we got a, we got the.
Hydro hammer?
Yeah. We got a, a hammer unit and it's got a, it's got a blade. So we use it for that. We do, especially on valve jobs, we use that, we use that blade. And that was, that was all I had. Oh, and, and the three positions that are open, uh, they're all funded. They're all, it's just.
How close are you?
We got one guy that has started Tuesday.
One guy just started Monday.
Um, and we have two more, two more slots.
And those are all three of those are high priority positions that you need to hire as soon as possible.
Definitely in the, in the, i- i- if we're going to go with the, the.
Positions related.
Well, yeah, and the, the assistant position. Uh, but that assistant position is, is, is a highly skilled position. You need somebody that can do the repairs and all of that.
Understood. Okay. Thanks Kenny. Appreciate it. All right, Leslie is, Leslie have an update?
Leslie is, uh, Leslie was on sick day. She said she was going to call in to give her report. So, um, clarification. The, the, the quotes that I gave you guys from MRI, there's two proposals for each pipe because originally they had, uh, bid that out as just doing the 24-inch repairs. And I asked them to also provide a quote for a 30-inch. So there's two quotes for each pipe, one for a 24-inch, one for a 30-inch. No.
Okay. Like, would, would want to make sure that we're not missing anything.
I can forward it to him. Yeah, I can forward it to him.
Forty-eight.
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 Yes. Because we can't get 48s in where those are because of the houses and pools and, yeah.
And, and he's, Rick has done the hydraulic calculations that the 20, he says the 24, but I'm telling you, I'd rather go with the 30 and play it safe, especially when we're accustomed with the 48 pipe.
Right.
So we're talking three times.
Yeah, it's about.
Yes.
Two, thirty, two.
Hundred ninety thousand per square. Okay, 190 is, we want to treat maintenance, that's under statutory threshold. So that, uh, for any bidding. The question is whether or not the other one qualifies as a construction as opposed to a repair. Uh, because then you can't waive statutory requirements. Looking at.
Or construction.
Construction is 200,000. But the definition of repair, a corrective action to restore an existing public facility to a safe and functional. Uh, and so if it's not repair, maintenance is a preventive or corrective action to maintain existing public facility. So it sounds like it's more. Here, here's another little one. Achieve this. Repair does not include the construction of any new structure or other public construction works or any substantial addition, extension or upgrade existing public facility. Such additions, extensions or upgrades, so if it's substantial, it's not repair, then it qualifies as construction. Is, is this a substantial?
No, we're not upgrading. We.
From 48 to 30.
You're going from 48 to 30. So we're not upgrading.
No, but we can't use the existing structures either.
We, we can't, we can't affect the existing structure.
Right. They are not repairable.
So in essence, I would say this is a construction project. It sounds like more than a repair. You're removing, you're removing an existing piping system.
We, we can't even.
You're leaving it on top of it.
Yeah, we're putting it on top of the existing pipe.
So it's a new construction project. Because you're leaving the old pipes in.
Yep.
You're constructing and installing new pipes.
Correct.
I'm, I'm trying.
Yes.
Because the construction.
So then we were under the 300,000 threshold.
300,000. Keep, keep talking. You're going the right direction.
So we're good to go then.
Construction threshold is 300,000 on it.
It's sort of spent time and money with the engineering to do this. So what, did this, but you've got somebody that.
So Rick Berlinski.
In fact, under that construction statutory scheme with the threshold, by time you apply the engineering record to about a $420,000 property and constructed without going necessarily through the competitive bidding process. So, I'm sorry.
Rick Berlinski is who I need to some. Rick Berl.
It was at the meeting and that was because evidently months ago, years ago, uh, Brian had brought him in on this deal. There's a special thing and how that happened is beyond me. But, uh.
So what I guess what I'm, I'm trying to, to the extent validly establish the record to show that the district does not need to engage in the competitive solicitation process to construct these three new pipes. So do we, and then the board would only need to waive, declare an emergency and waive any district rule, uh, competitive solicitation requirement.
And do we have to? Can we make a motion to approve for this, for this work with a not to exceed?
It's up to the board.
Just, you know, just to, if we're not sure.
Uh, I'd let Rick talk to the contractor on that because you're talking about, uh, very tough construction. Uh, it's, it's got a lot of exposure, a lot of exposure.
But my point is, do we, do we need to make a motion to approve the action? But my point is, do we, do we need to make a motion to approve the action?
That the one thing you could do is do it as an estimated not to exceed, but if you do it as a not to exceed, they're gonna come back and say, well, this is a lump sum, I'll just do it.
Oh, shoot, Logan, go inside, it's your turn. No, I'll pause it for a second, I'll rewind, go, go, come on.
Okay.
Sounds like there's also L.
I tried to do it as an estimate.
That's Leslie.
So I, I guess the appropriate action would be, first of all, if you open up the floor for any public comment, since this is an add-on walk-on item, there's an emergency.
Okay, uh, is there anybody on the floor that, or in the building that would like to make a comment or have a statement? Or if there's anyone online, if you could send a chat?
But would like to have Rick involved, uh.
I'm sending it to him right now.
Checking it all out and making sure that we didn't miss anything or that better yet, the contractor didn't miss anything.
Yeah, I mean, even if we, even if we take the amount out of play at this particular, I just wanna make sure staff that we have on the record that we give them authorization to proceed. And we do not, uh, uh, to set the threshold of of what the amount, so we, so we don't have to go through a bidding process. Correct, I think I can go with that.
Yeah, well, I guess the important part, again, the the threshold amount of three hundred thousand dollars for construction must be adjusted by the percentage change in the engineering news records, building cost index from January first oh nine to January first of twenty twenty-one. And the last time I had that checked before in my other districts, that number is over four hundred thousand dollars. By the time you do the adjustments every year, so if you're under four hundred, it's like four hundred nineteen thousand dollars. If you're under that, which you are by virtue of this, then this competitive solicitation requirement outlined in two eighty, two fifty-five point twenty does not apply. Uh, so, but I think it would be important to, uh, declare an emergency, waive the district's competitive solicitation requirements and award the, uh, construction of this work outlined in these proposals with, I think you said whatever not to exceed numbers for each of the projects.
I'd, I'd, I would make the motion that Tony just said and put the not to exceed at, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, give us some work going.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I have a clarification question, uh, is that for just the MRI portion of the bill would be not to exceed?
Total, total project cost.
Or with engineering as well?
I just took all three and.
So just the MRI bills not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand, that engineering, if there's any engineering costs, just the MRI.
Just MRI.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great, thank you. Okay.
Thanks for getting that together with that, this, this is a bomb that we could have if we get a rain event, a bomb.
Uh, so I know that Leslie's out today, is there?
She's, no, she's on.
I, I know, but didn't you say she was out?
No, she's not physically in the building, she is online. She was ready to give her report. I'm here.
As a reminder, staff, for the duration of these reports, we are behind, so if if there are specific highlights, let's hit those. And if there are things that aren't critical, let's just move them.
Okay, Leslie Rictorvic, Utility Billing Manager, I just wanted to give an update towards, um, I had made a statement in the last meeting during the rate presentation. I inserted a statement regarding the irrigation ERC factors. Um, I was incorrect. Those factors did not change, they remain the same. Uh, it was a discussion item that we had with Chris prior to him leaving, but that was not carried out at the rate presentation. So the only changes were as the rate consultant did present, um, and is shown below, are the tiers being reduced down from twenty-five thousand gallons per tier down to the fifteen. So I just wanted to make that clarification and the consultant plan to discuss or review this, um, during the public hearing on December the second.
Yeah, so basically what we're saying, Leslie, here is, is that the new updated version of the rate, uh, ratios between meters was not changed.
Correct, they remained as they had been in place, um, the prior two, three rate studies.
Got you. All right. Thank you, Leslie.
And that's all, thank you.
Okay. L. You are up.
L Harris, Gateway Services District. I'll be presenting two reports today, the stormwater and the landscape. Um, Jim is out for a while, so I'm filling in, covering that area for him too. Um, just one thing I want to address from Mr. Wysonuski. Um, we did follow up on the lake access easement, I believe that the gentleman have a map, they had somebody new come out that made a mistake. It has been corrected going forward again. So it didn't fall on deaf ears.
My residents last night, please bring it up again.
I understand, um, I talked to him too, so handled. Um. And other than that, I am just, um, here to answer questions and to let Aquagenics have, uh, a chance to answer some questions that you may have.
I have some questions.
Okay, Flavi, I'll let you lead.
Uh, I just took the time to really go into the report and in that. And I just maybe want to suggest that when we're writing, when you're writing that a pond is in compliance with the standards, but then there's a note that says that the bend is wider than twelve feet. I don't think that's in compliance with the standards. So if we could going forward, because I know from, we have thirteen ponds on that report, that the bend exceeds the twelve feet. So to me, those thirteen ponds should be out of compliance with the standards. Um, so, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And then I did have. Um, I want a clarification from you because I, I don't have it. We really didn't address kidney ponds, you know, are the, are the standards? And I wanted to know how is Aquagenics or or you looking at? Are we treating kidney ponds just like it was any part of the pond? Or do they have special criteria that we have to meet that are different than just the regular linear, um, area on the pond?
Okay, um, the kidney filters are an area on the, on a pond already. It's called a pond kidney filter and it's just basically a little area that jets in off of the pond. Those are required to be full of vegetation. We do however, go in and treat them for exotic vegetation. We try to keep them to a five percent maximum coverage of exotic vegetation. And, um, but we do not reduce them back to twelve feet. They, however wide they are, that's what they're supposed to be from, for the pond kidney filters only. Along the shoreline of the actual pond, again, um, it's to be maintained that wider than twelve feet.
Okay, so, so no removal besides exotics that exceed five percent, all right?
Reduce the kidney filters, they are required by the permit to mimic a natural marsh.
Then I have one final question, which is in regards to the control structures, I, I believe we have what? I, I heard Ed say seventy-six ponds, I actually thought it was a little bit more, but I'll, I'll go with seventy-six. Um. Are all the control structures clear three feet around in all the ponds?
I wouldn't say they're three feet all the way around them, they're open in the front for sure, so that we have good water flow, so that we have had good water flow. Aquagenics went around prior to the rainy season to do that and they will be following up again when the water levels go down. Anything that has come up that was, um, not reachable or it would cause issues to try to get it from the shoreline, they are now working and putting in the boat. They'll have somebody out here on a weekly basis now that we're dry enough to get the boats in. And they will also be working on those areas. Okay, that's all I have.
Was that it for you, Flavi?
For Al, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have pictures here, L, of, uh, three ponds, uh, wanting to prep, uh, particularly one sixteen, one eighteen, and one twenty. Uh, the, the laterals and the, have them, the laterals and the, um, I, I don't know what that is at Callaway Greens, but right now it's running seven and eight feet high and it is just disgusting. It's the full length of the eleventh hole and people are on me big time as to why is that stuff there? It's, looks like a swamp. But somehow we gotta get in there and if the issue is, is that we haven't been in there simply because we can't get a boat in there, I can get a boat in there.
On which pond did you say?
One sixteen, one eight.
One eighteen?
One sixteen's the pond I'm on, down with the ninth hole.
Yeah, that's the one with the, with deal here right here.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, you know, that's an invasive, invasive exotic plant.
And they, they, with, this is what bothers me, I'm bobbing the whole thing on the laterals. You look at that and it's not the way the laterals are supposed to be, the laterals are supposed to be from the control elevation out. We got sixty-eight feet of no, no laterals and then they start six and eight feet out and go out thirty feet. That's not the idea and purpose of laterals.
The laterals follow the water, when the water comes up, the laterals do, and then once it goes out, they go back down. And yes, they do try to keep a control line between the bank and the beginning of the laterals.
See, our.
So they keep a control line, but again, the, the plants fluctuate. It depends how that shelf on that pond is designed.
My point is that if we're going to use laterals and we're going to use the argument that it's for lake bank stabilization, then it needs to be where the lake bank stabilization is occurring and that's between zero and six feet.
And it also.
That's the explosion.
It also is to reduce wave action when we have storms come in and the waves start on the pond. The laterals that are a little bit further out still help to reduce that wave action, which helps to stabilize your pond.
Is, is the eight to twelve feet, but if we have an issue with a boat, because this is, I guess we're in our second or third year of this contract, I would have thought this would have come up a long time ago, that if we need to get access to the lakes, has anybody met with the golf course to talk to about how to get a boat in there?
They put boats in this pond, in these ponds, I'm sorry, they use a boat out here every single year. During the summertime, they, you won't see them in a boat out there much because.
Too low.
Well, no, during the summertime, the water is high and the pond banks are saturated and the le, ground is saturated. And to drive a truck with a pond with a boat and a tank full of chemical across properties to launch them cause more damage than coming back in the springtime when it's dried up. And now you get them reduced back and you get them cut back where they need to be.
Five-yard buckets of sand at the golf course, all around the golf course. So there's plonies of way around the golf course to get a boat in there.
Well, I thought I heard you say earlier, you couldn't get the truck in there because it was too wet.
Who's that?
When you were talking about the golf course earlier, you said, yeah, they've had that issue out there.
Get them on the pass, your issue is like, oh, if you want to go to pond one eighteen or one sixteen, you go around the back of the maintenance building, come out behind the eleventh hole and drop the lake or the pot, the boat in right there.
So I guess.
But the issue, the issue is, is, yeah, the issue, huh? Yeah, that would be the way I would say of doing it.
And that's the way we usually do, however, still, again, when it's wet, we have to be sensitive to tearing up the golf course to get across there. Or when it's, when it's good conditions, you get the boat in and then you get them knocked back again.
Understand all of those issues, but what's the prerogative, what's our alternative to maintain the standard?
The standard is seasonal, the standard is the same as far as the weather, but when the water's high.
Well, the standard.
Water's high and.
Yeah, but the standard's eight to twelve.
Right, but, but that's always a moving target, it is always a moving target, that's seasonal.
People, people don't understand that, they see eight to twelve, when it's thirty-five feet out, they don't get that.
Well, that's excessive.
Well, there's nothing out there that's thirty-five feet out unless you're standing on one of the pond kidney filters and you're looking across that. There's not an area of laterals out there, is there somewhere out there that's thirty-five feet wide?
Tenth hole, tenth hole.
And, and name of, name the pond, tell him the pond number, he doesn't know the golf course.
So what's the long one that goes all the way down from the club?
I can't hear whoever's talking.
Here, Jim, please, can we come to the club?
Yeah, uh, you go, go from, go from the clubhouse straight out all the way to the kidney filter.
Well, let's, let's stop just for a second, I think in order to resolve this, if, if you have a specific issue, go look at.
That's why I brought the, that's why I brought the picture, yeah.
And if there's a concern, we address it to staff, staff goes out and confirms the issue or comes back and says, no, that's the, it's a kidney shelf, it's whatever. And then from the Aquagenics perspective, if during the wet season, if there are concerns with, with boat access to any of the ponds through your standard channels, if you can't get there, the first response should be to staff to say, hey, uh, can we get in contact with someone at, at the golf course to figure out if there's other alternatives or is there other alternatives for staff?
I totally agree with that.
Wet access should not be the, the first response to, to not treat. And I'm sure you guys are, are doing whatever you can, but my point is, there's ways around, especially if you work with, uh, the folks at the, at the golf course. There's, there's ways to get around, uh, to do that. But what we're hearing is that there are some concerns with the lateral shelf exceeding our contractual obligations and we just need you to be mindful of it.
Yeah, what, what's the plant, I, I've been asked, because I don't know what it is, what is that plant that's growing six, seven, eight feet out of the water right now?
You mean tall?
Yes, tall.
I think these, I think there's some bulrush, is it on one eighteen?
Yes.
Bulrush.
Bulrush, and I believe it was.
Beneficial.
Was it cut and treated yet?
No, that one is at one eighteen by the, by the bridge.
Yes.
From the bridge back.
Yeah, that's always been pretty much solid, uh, bulrush. That's pretty much your only good, uh, beneficial plant that's growing there, uh, in order to be, you know, for beneficial and in order to help filter out.
Why do I have trouble with the beneficial, I just have trouble with the eight feet.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if they're beneficial.
Is that seasonal, is that, does bulrush die out? It stays?
Just like the thalia, the bulrush has to go.
Now, when, when bulrush reaches a, a certain height, what, do you, you cut it back?
Whether it's on the golf course.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say.
It's on the golf course, it doesn't matter, yeah.
But you got residential though, that's right across, they'd have to.
If you have it in a conservation area, you just let it go, right?
No, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm quite, why would you?
No, I wouldn't. Do what?
Why is it a problem on the golf course?
Because you got people that are relying, lining up on the other side that have to look at it, they don't like it, they don't.
They don't want to see it.
They don't want to see it, they don't want to see it. If we cut it back and like we do with the thalia and cut it back to where it's not, what, three feet?
Right.
I don't think you'll have any problem, but this stuff is way over three feet.
They, I believe that they, um, well, I had, had it in here, we talked about it last time when you were out.
Yeah, usually the best thing for the giant bulrush is I would not have it. Because cutting it only encourage, encourages more of it and faster growth. So, uh, it's just a bad plant if you want like, uh, you know, line of sight, that's a terrible beneficial plant to have. So, yeah, usually a golf course is that one and sometimes it might get in the way of playing golf. They'll just remove it and put a different beneficial in its place.
How easy or hard is it to remove that stuff?
It's not that hard.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to treat it, it'd have to be treated, then cut and removed, you know, so.
That's all I had, I'll, I'll check and get back with you, L, on, on these, on the ponds.
Um, I do, so L, with the report, if you could just do me a favor, um, I think if you could just make the adjustment on, uh, if there is an issue.
Then remove the yes.
Remove the yes, and if you could color code these for me, so if they're in compliance, just, just, just the, um, just the light number, just put them in green and if they're out of compliance, just put them in red, just so we can quickly. And then if, on the, on the beginning of the report, if you could say, you know, out of seventy-six ponds, how many are, um, compliant? And how many are not? And I'm, I'm compliant to the pond standard, not necessarily to the contract.
Okay, um, yes, we can do that. And also to add whether or not they have exotics on private property nearby or exotics on property that needs to be removed, correct?
Wait, say that again?
Um, you said to make a list of ponds with banks that have exotics that need property owners to clean up and add that to the stormwater.
Yeah, basically, if, when you're out there on the ponds, those that aren't, uh, that are adjacent to commercial property or property we don't own, if, if you believe there's a concern, whether it's for access or it's overgrown or there's ex, whatever, I mean, you've been doing this long and if you know what.
Right, and I understand, I'm just saying to make sure I add this to the.
It doesn't matter where the exotic is, they're not allowed, right?
Pardon me?
It would not, where an exotic is, it's not allowed.
It's not supposed to be, but we got them everywhere.
Well, only if it exceeds the permit, uh, requirement, so permit does allow for some, so, uh, you know, I'm just playing devil's advocate. Only if you, you know, surpasses that, but I believe most of them are fifteen percent, am I right, L?
Um, I think that we have put in our pond standards so not to exceed five percent.
Five percent, yeah, that's not very much.
It's not, but. Whatever, okay, also, there was a couple of other things on this report, I don't know if anyone noticed. We had some approachment issues with the wetland in Hampton Park. Um, plants were replanted and signs were put in place. I did contact Florida, um, the water management. I did contact Florida, um, the Water Management District, made sure that they were aware of what had happened and what we did to discourage it going forward. Also, there was a wetland behind Daniel's Preserve, the one behind the brewery, where people like to take, uh, four wheelers and go out there and find some mud. We put up signs there as well. Again, hopefully it will.
How are they accessing that?
They can go around the barn, they go over the barn right there behind the, behind the brewery.
Are they coming in from the brewery side?
Yeah.
Yes.
That whole wall, they can mount that wall.
Is the wetland, you're talking about a conservation area?
Yes.
Okay, I can, I had.
Yeah, I'm sorry, interchangeable words.
Okay, so if they're in a conservation area, they can't be, period.
Well, that's, I can't be there twenty-four seven.
No, 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 I know that, but it's always a violation whenever they're there.
I, and I alert the Water Management District, let them know what we see and what we are doing to try to discourage it going forward.
Do we have any permanent cameras? We can put a camera in the boxing area?
No, I'm sorry, we don't. I've thought about game, game cams before, but.
I don't even know, even if you saw.
No, I don't know what it might pick up and I probably don't want to see it. Now, the other thing, the aerators we brought to you several months ago.
You know, that might have, uh, commercial property over there.
Pardon me?
The aerators are after the lakes.
Yeah. It's on page thirty-one. The aerators we brought to you before that were in terrible condition in the breaker boxes. Um, we have repaired eight of them in Stony Brook. We still have a few that are in very bad condition. Um, we had a meeting with Tony several months ago. We had talked about the fact that, um, those aerators are hooked up to, uh, meters that belong to the HOA. They were installed that way by the developer. And those boxes are in very bad condition as well. But I put a picture in here of our newly installed, updated and now safe breaker box. Storm drain cleaning.
Before you leave the area, what was your average cost? Because we're spending fourteen thousand.
This was only for the breaker box. This is only for the box, yeah. All we did was, yeah, the aerators themselves are in good shape. The compressors and boxes are, cabinets are fine.
Are you changing the meters to the district?
The meter, these meters already are in our name. We do hold the, we are the.
I thought you said they were.
There's others, there's six other ones that are not in Gateway's name.
Are you in the process of changing that?
Um.
Yeah, El and I, at the time, Brian, talked about going to the, uh, association that has the, uh, called the joint use and working out an arrangement with regards to how that could be addressed from the standpoint, because both are at risk because of the unsafe conditions.
Correct.
And we just need to, because all the other issues kind of got sidetracked, we just need to step that up.
Do, do we not?
Well, the other part of it, excuse me, the other part of it is homeowners association paying extra fees and things that we wouldn't pay.
Correct.
There's a benefit to the total.
That's correct.
If we pay.
Yeah, and that was part of the discussion about.
Okay.
I thought we'd made a decision on that, um, but I'll have to go back.
Well, I know we did in Pelican, we moved every single.
No, what I'm saying, I think, I, I thought like two months.
We talked about splitting, um, I believe, we're already doing two meters.
Yeah, well, I'll go back to the list we had. We had a list, El had a very good comprehensive list with photographs. And we talked about which ones to address on a priority basis and which ones to go back to the associations.
We're just embarking on this now, I mean, we only got a few. But as it grows, we ought to be consistent in how we apply it.
Yeah, once, and these are just for the district, but there is a difference when we get to the district and the association. We talked about how to have an arrangement that would benefit both parties and it, so we'll revisit that. I'll go back and get my notes on that, El.
When are we going to be getting the bath metric bids in so that we?
I have two. I am waiting on the other two. I asked four vendors. I do have two bids in. I don't want to say numbers in a public meeting and give the numbers away. Um, because we do have one vendor here that submitted a proposal for that.
Who has not submitted? What, I mean, what's the deadline?
We have not gotten one back from solitude and from, um, extreme divers.
If you want side, side of that, you can send me. So, but what, how much longer are we going to wait for those two?
I would, I, I sent out email.
Now's the time, because we're a control elevation. Deadline right now, so let's give.
We can just set a cutoff.
November fifteenth.
Well, when did you set it?
Have it at the next meeting.
I'd say about to end the month.
Well, we won't have the funds available until, what, December?
We, we usually try to wait till after the tax money starts coming in, which is November.
And this was not, this was not put in the budget, it was put in the loan.
This is part of the.
It was a hundred, I thought we had a hundred and fifty thousand.
In the loan section, not in, it was not put in the, oh, oh.
It was put under capital under the loan.
Okay, but what makes the difference?
I.
In the loan.
We don't have the money yet.
We don't have the money right now.
Don't have the money to do what? To finance it?
Right.
If we're doing it as a loan, what is it, on a five year or?
It, it's the one where we took a lot of our maintenance issues out of the oh, oh, one and put it into three hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Or it's a three hundred or three oh one.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to figure out what money do you have to have? If it's a loan, you, you have a.
We don't have, we haven't been able to make any draws off the loan yet. It's for that, that five-year loan that we're doing with First Horizon. It's not finalized yet.
So in other words, we don't have the funds to make the principal and interest payment on the money we would borrow?
We do, yeah, we have it in the bank, but we like, we usually like to wait on our capital projects until after we.
Let's say, let's say it is, what's the date? My point is, is that now is the time to be doing the bath metrics because we're a control elevation.
Yep, I would say end of the month, it gives ten days.
That's what I'd say. Let's go end of the month.
Ten more days. Give us another reminder, tell them we need to by the end of the month.
Into this month to have, into this month to have the.
Have the, have the numbers.
Pretty labor intensive process.
Yeah, we got a lot of work.
It gives you ten, it gives them ten days.
And well, once we get that and we figure it out, then we'll, we'll work through the funding.
Okay.
Okay, I also actually have some.
An update on them at the November fourth meeting.
I actually have some preliminary numbers on aeration, but again, I don't want to give those numbers out in a public meeting because, huh?
Of installation?
Yes.
So we'll plan to present the bath metric.
In the same pond that we are having the bath metrics.
Until we get the bath metrics, we're just guessing on the.
Right, we'll present that at the meeting on the fourth.
But you ask, you ask for preliminary numbers so that we could budget on that going forward. The other thing is storm drain cleaning.
But one, one step back.
Okay.
On the aeration.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are we specifying that we want nothing less than half horsepower pumps? Or are we leaving it up to the bidders to say whether they want a quarter, half or three quarter?
Um, actually, I did not send them an aeration design. Um, that's not something that we would generally, staff would generally do. I just happen to know the vendor is very well versed in these, so I mentioned it and they just took it upon themselves to go ahead and put numbers together for us. However.
Prepare our own basic spec.
Correct.
Learn the lessons of Pelican, only put in half horsepower.
Okay.
This makes it so much easier than trying to deal with all the other spare parts.
Right.
And then you ought to set a standard that the aerators, the diffusers themselves, be no further apart by X footage. We use a hundred-footed Pelicans.
That's what, that's what is standard right there.
And we've got to figure out who this electrical engineer is, is going to be working with us to work with FPL.
Well, that's a very costly project.
And that's the other thing.
Costly, we got to.
That's a costly.
Will it be the same engineer that any of the, the bidders will do? That, that's a question to be made, or are all the bidders going to have to bring in their own electrical engineer?
Well.
Those, all those type of questions.
Yeah, this is like a two-year project, minimum, maybe more.
Yep. Okie doke.
Nice.
Set at least those standards.
And I would say, again, if we can make sure that we, you know, maybe do engage, uh, Pelican, just to, as we're building the, the standards out.
And a turnover rate of minimum of twenty-four hours.
Yes, well, that's a standard too. That's, that's a standard too, they, yes. Um, storm drain cleaning. Okay, MRI has begun phase two, uh, basin five. Um, I know I have here Mahogany Run, Town Lakes Water, I mean, yeah, and Waterford Village. I know that they have also done, um, Devonshire, completed Devonshire as well. Also, we did have to clean the, um, eight-inch rear yard drainage in Hampton Park. Uh, we had to have the vacuum truck come out. We cleared two runs and it was fifteen hundred dollars. And I did make a mistake here when I put down the contract development, the Pelican Preserve Access Control. We are still working on getting that vendor in. There has been some legal questions that, uh, Mr. Pierce and Laura are handling for us.
Yeah, we just have one section of the contract that the security vendor wished to modify. And we'll, we'll be wrapping that up either tomorrow or Monday.
It goes into effect, I'm sorry. Wisner or?
Wisner, correct.
We're, we're.
Wiser.
Wiser.
So it's not wrapped up yet?
No.
Not wrapped up yet.
We're on just like one tiny section.
One section dealing with, uh.
And I will soon have the landscape contracts done. I had one last meeting with Scott Charnot and Joe Schofield last week, um, just to finalize the bid sheets and the maps. So hopefully we'll have that ready for Tony's review and, um, get that out published and get that moving on.
Double back to the, to the basin four, basin five. Five is the one we started last year and we're finishing.
And we had to split it into two sections for budgeting purposes.
So five is the one, four is the next one we're going to do.
Four is the next one to do.
And we're, am I correct in thinking that we're going to go out for bids?
Yes.
For that, we'll issue the public bids? Okay, and we'll, are we doing just inspection or inspection and cleaning?
Well, that would be up to the board's direction here. I mean, we can do.
I would just throw out to the board members.
Save money doing it.
I think it's more robust if you get one person to do the inspection, then you don't have an order. Whatever he finds, and that's what generates the clean.
Do that.
Not opposed to that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look at dividing it.
First inspection and then once that comes in, then we'll make a decision about.
Okay.
You're talking about pipe?
Yeah, yeah. Inspecting the pipes, yep.
And back to, um, the Daniel's Preserve in Worthington thing, they were talking about twenty-four inch because it's going to be tricky getting those pipes in under the road, as Ed alluded to. There is no open space. We are going to have to be working within our fifteen-foot drainage easement. And being conscious of what our infrastructure, i.e. utilities. We have irrigation, we have potable water, we have sewer lines, we have power all out at the road and in these other, uh, utility easements that they will have to be working over and or under. So there, they have to, their pipe size will be limited because of the space they have to go through.
We need aerial photos blown up for every one of those places. And then have, uh, like a town hall meeting with the impacted residents and show them what we've got, because it's, it's going to be a mess between their yards. It's going to be a mess.
We don't have asphalt, I think, in all existing, whatever.
Oh, yeah, we have asphalt, it's just that it's not correct.
They're Pelican asphalt, so I know that.
The firm that did them.
Yeah, they are asphalt.
Okay.
We have a drone so we can, uh, to get the aerial shots.
Yeah, we need to get the aerials to, to meet with each of this, uh, because you're dealing with about maybe eight families that we need to get them in that, that are directly impacted. No, it's more than that.
Well, it's going to impact the whole neighborhood.
That's what I was thinking.
About twelve families that are directly impacted.
And if you're doing work between houses, it sounds like.
Yep.
The drainage, I would suggest doing inspection reports of the structures of the homes beforehand.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Just to make sure, because people may make claims afterwards that are really not.
Same thing, if Adam, having them turn on their irrigation systems, getting those located, because they are all going to get destroyed.
Right. That's right.
That's why I want to make sure things that, like that, are those included in that price of the seventy-six thousand? All those little, uh, uh, add-ons, is that, is that complete? Because if it is, we're in pretty good shape. If they come back and says, well, I didn't include that, or I didn't include that, we need to know that.
Do we have any questions for Aquagenics? Um, they've been here and been so patient, uh, if we have anything.
I have one. I have one, El. Um, you, you said, is Jim his name?
Yes, I have Jim here.
Jim, just walk me through the process. It, all scenarios, if we have a boat in the water, right, and then the laterals are, let's say, fifteen feet. Um, how much do you spray? The three feet to make it in compliance with twelve, or you go back all the way from fifteen to eight feet? I can't hear you.
He's coming up.
No, sorry.
It would be just to make it compliant, so go back twelve. Also, uh, whether I'm doing it or any other technicians, um, I recommend to them not spraying more than three feet at a time, say per visit for that lake, because it makes it terribly unsightly. Uh, you know, having, say, a five foot, let's just say it was a five foot, you wanted to knock it back five feet, you went five feet. It's going to be five feet of dead vegetation for months laying there. You know, it's just going to look unsightly, but if you chip it away, let's say to three feet, um, and then keep working it back every time, like the boat's in there, because they could be doing something else, say, going after algae or other invasives while they're in there now, I'm having all the guys, hey, make sure it's within twelve feet, you know? So keep knocking it back while the boat's in there, make the best use of your time and try and get everything while the boat's launched in there. So there's less launches happening as well.
It'll be a little painful at first.
Yeah.
Once you get it, easy to keep.
Yeah, yeah, and we, um, first addressed, uh, one eighteen and one twenty were the first two that, um, that we had to start knocking back. I felt those two were the worst, especially with where they're located and how often they're seen. They're right by where people are having lunch and everything right there. Uh, I believe it's one eighteen. Um, so that was top priority. But methodically moving throughout the property to the other ones that are now flagged, uh, knocking those back, so.
And we shouldn't have to flag them. If your guys are really doing a job, they'll keep it, so it won't get to be a problem.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
And Bobby, I want to ask a question on top of yours really quick. Um, so when you cut, let's say if you spray back, so let's just say as an example, it's fifteen feet and you spray your three feet, it takes it back to twelve. What is the rap, what's the pace of growth moving forward? Because if you cut it back to twelve.
You're back non-compliant.
You're already at maximum.
That's the problem.
So then you're, you know.
Yeah.
So is it, I understand the three feet makes sense to a certain extent, but almost, I think you should take it back to your ten feet.
Yeah, you could, and depends time of year too.
So let me just, let me make this recommendation and you can, you guys can chime in. If, if the lateral, um, ban exceeds twelve feet, you would cut it back to ten, unless, or spray back to ten, unless it exceeds your three feet. You know, if we all agree that three feet is, is the right, you know, that's what I would say, because that gives you two feet of growth to keep you in compliance. And maybe, maybe, you know, maybe it's eight, I mean, I don't know.
And then I guess, but I guess that that's what my, my thought was going to, and that's why I was asking, because I, you know, before I left, I visited a few ponds that I do know that they sprayed, but within two months or so, they were right back at it. So if they're fifteen and we're spraying them to twelve, then, you know, it's just more work for them. I know it can get unsightly, but I think there was an opportunity that we left them, you know, fifteen, twenty, and I just, I, I think they should be a minimum of ten, because, you know, the standard says eight, not to exceed twelve. The target is really eight, and we're giving them three feet to, you know, play. So I don't think we should be looking at twelve. So I don't think we should be looking at twelve. I think we should definitely be looking at eight or ten.
Okay, so let's set that standard here. Look, because we've got all the board, we've got oxygenics here. And first we need to agree that. You know, spraying anything over three feet is not what we want. Now, if we say we don't care, we want it cut back, we want it sprayed back to. Uh, to whatever that desired length is, we need to make that decision. I think it's just a recommendation that not to cut, not to spray over three feet because it becomes unsightly. We need to, I think we need to make a decision.
We'll, we'll never get it back to, to twelve feet if we don't do it the other way.
So are we in agreement that, that we spray back total length or total distance to get to?
Ten.
Ten feet, I'd, I'd go along with that.
I, I would suggest we probably, when we have isolated cases like this, and I'm assuming it's not rampant. Pay to have it removed. You're not going to like the appearance if they're spraying five and it's falling.
So, uh, so that brings up.
If it's serious, it's a problem. Get it removed.
Okay, so that brings up another, okay, so we got a lot of.
Is that in the contract as an extra? George is saying yes. That's in the contract as an extra. Removing, hand removing the material.
Could you get an estimate? Because as of right now, we have thirteen that exceed, there are fifteen that we know. So how about from, and then I can, I, I have a list of the ones they are, actually they're on the report. So if we can get a quote from them, they, you know, they can go ahead and do the spray of three now, just to them look so unsightly. But then in a quote to do the full removal to ten feet on those thirteen ponds.
So, so let's.
Uh, let me, let me clarify something here. Let me finish this. Uh, the whole pond is not fifteen feet wide. There's a spot here that's wide. Down the pond, there's another spot that's a little wide. The whole pond, there's not fifteen foot lotoral band down the whole side of the pond. It's a spot here and a spot here and a spot there.
Just have them give us a price to take it back to ten feet and give it and uh.
Okay.
And remove it, and then we'll know what we're looking at.
So.
And bring in the we do.
So, let's, let's try to set up a process standard here. So anytime. There is uh, growth past twelve feet, that's our not to exceed. You spray if it's within three. Anything other three feet, you come back. That needs to be reported to us, and then we will make the decision on whether we're going to have it removed. Or if we're going to spray or whatever, but we're, we're going to take it from.
Doug, I think it's simpler than that. If, if, if we take this instance this year and take the areas that Elle's talking about. And we put up the money to take it out, we're done with it for the future.
That's right.
If it grows again, that's on you.
It's okay.
That's on.
So make, make, I think you're right there. So that is to get an estimate for any pond where lotorals exceed ten feet. That exceed ten feet. Or remove, so we need to.
It's an immediate compliance issue.
We're, yeah, we're gonna.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to bring to your attention too is. Naturally, it will never go beyond the lit shelf. Those things don't just grow across.
Once the water's deep enough.
Yeah, yeah, it'll never grow to a certain line. So it always will want to keep growing out to where the lit shelf ends.
But that's your responsibility to maintain that.
They, when you cut it, it will definitely come back. It'll always keep, yeah, it'll always keep coming back.
But you'll know these areas and you keep them sprayed so they never grow.
And in order to keep it sprayed though, you'll have to let it grow so chemical can physically. Go on to the vegetation in order for it to die. And once you cut it, just my experience, when you cut it, it's like giving it a haircut, it blows up.
We're not asking you to cut it, we're asking you to remove it.
Yeah, so you can, we can treat it, cut it.
Next year it's going to grow again.
It will always grow and you, and in order, let's say you're going to.
But if you're spraying it monthly, you'll stay ahead of it.
Oh, yeah, that's the. As long as it's something to spray.
Trying to get to a point of control, so it's just up to you to maintain it.
Yeah.
And it should never get past three feet, should never get past, you know, five feet unless there's something egregious that, you know, some.
Yeah.
Super growth or something, but.
That's kind of the way they've been treating Pelican for years. And they have harvested out there at, at no cost to us when problems have occurred.
And is that the same, so just for my, and I'm glad you guys are here, we really appreciate it. Um, so that's maintaining. Uh, growth out in the water. So from control elevation. Uh, to what do we call it then?
Look, the, the standard was eight to twelve feet, but you, we just said ten feet, so we're going, the band is zero to ten feet.
Well, but the other complaint that we get is the growth that happens from the high watermark to. I don't know if you want to call it control elevation.
Yeah, control line or.
Yeah, so that's where, that's where really the residents complain. Uh, when that, because it's in between our mode line and.
You mean that, that, at the control elevation down, not up?
So control elevation to low watermark.
Okay.
Where there's, there's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's just.
So we got four months where there's no water.
That's exactly right.
It, it, and it dies. That's my whole problem with that whole idea.
Invasive growth.
Yeah.
Things don't look good. So how do we, how are we managing that?
Any of the normal vegetation, any invasive or exotic vegetation is constantly monitored and treated as necessary as it keeps popping up.
Hampton Park's a good example where that happens.
So it includes the stone, any, any uh, uh, stuff growing in the stones.
Stones are sprayed absolutely, and it has to be before it even remotely gets. Starts getting beyond like three inches tall. Um, like for instance, in my section, I'll, I'll go around all my stone areas. Twice a month. Usually, and a lot of times I'll spray it twice a month, just to, I want it just to be stone there, not any vegetation.
Getting back to my point, so if we're at um, low watermark to control elevation. Normally that's where, and, and like I said, Hampton Park is one area that I know just gets really bad. Uh, because that's where I get the emails the most. Or do we, are we spraying that? Are we cutting it? Because a lot of times, if I'm a homeowner. I don't cut, I, I either, I cut right to that area, but it's so wet, I can't get a mower there. Uh, or if we have, uh, or if we're cutting it. So are we spraying that? Who, who's responsible?
They can't spray that because if you can't mow it, they can't spray it. Meaning that if they sprayed that edge, they're going to kill your grass. The herbicides that they use is, are systemic, meaning they spray it on there, it's absorbed in and it takes.
So you'd have to use, you'd have to have a weed eater.
Takes it to the.
So who's, who's responsibility to maintain that are?
I, I don't know whose that is, is to maintain that from the control of, I thought it was the CDDs from the control elevation out.
We do, and they'll spray it clean, they spray it, so, but there's. It's kind of like that rough on the edge of the golf course where they decide just to leave a little space that, that's rough, that's a little higher.
Yeah, but this is like, I mean, I've seen growth where it's, it's.
Well, as people choose not to met, not to weed in their backyard, I can't make them do it.
I'm trying to figure out whose responsibility it is.
We maintain from the control elevation down.
Is landscaping.
Landscaping.
Um, now we have, if it gets in the way.
Whoever owns.
No, no, we're talking control elevation down.
I'm talking pond.
That's in the water.
But you're talking about what they're seeing, where you're seeing that growth is at the top of the control elevation, at the top of it, where they just stop mowing and then they don't weed it.
That, 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 I saw that on my yard. I put one of the red out of bounds stakes at the control elevation. So I know all the time where the water level is relative to control. Anything down is a CDD, anything up is.
Well, that's correct, and we haven't, I've not had a problem with.
Makes it easy.
So Elle, just do me a favor, when you're, when you're walking the ponds, just take a look and see how severe you think the issue is. I, I just know I've gotten, I, I get emails about that being a huge issue because the, even if the homeowner says, hey, I mow, but I can only mow so far if it's wet. But then it grows and it's, you know, it's slightly, and they feel like it's our responsibility, which, I mean.
And if it's a li, and if it's a lake that has not been.
That's normally where.
Pond fixed at, at one of our projects, there's where the problem's at.
That's right. So just let me know what the severity is and, and if, how we're addressing it uh, at some point moving forward. Any additional questions for Aquagenics?
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Jim.
Take off and go.
Appreciate your time very much.
Okay.
Captain audience.
Yeah.
Thank you. Talk to you.
Let's get uh.
Yeah, Elle, uh, is there any additional questions for Elle?
Yeah, I've got one.
Okay.
Um. Gateway has pond standards and Pelican has pond standards that are more. Uh, so in the Gateway Pond Standards, there's a specific statement that says these standards don't apply in Pelican. And we have had a historic practice that when residents of Pelican Reserve complain, either to Castle Management. Or over here to the district, those complaints are forwarded to the pond's work group to handle. We've been doing this for about ten years and it's worked pretty well. Recently we had a situation that was kind of unusual. We had some residents complaining about lotorals growing in the flowway. And that's not normal in most, most areas because it's always moving. However, the, the resident complained. And when the staff heard it, resident complaint, they went and addressed it. So what I want to do is get a sense of the board. I would like to say. That no, when anything related to waterways and conservation areas in Pelican Reserve come in, we certainly record the message or whatever. But then that gets referred automatically to ponds to handle it because we would not have removed those lotorals. We were told the resident that was complaining that they're there, we want them there, and they leave it. Now, flowway is an area in which Pelican does not contribute to the maintenance of. And we understand that too. Uh, but nevertheless, I want to have the flowway from a resident complaint point of view only, or resident comment. To have that flowway considered to be just like any other pond or conservation area in Pelican.
So Bob, what you're asking is consideration for the board for anytime there is any action to be taken on a flowway that, that resides within Pelican. That the Pelican P-PAC be notified prior to any action.
Just like we have, we've been doing this for years.
Yeah, we've been doing that in all your ponds. I've never contacted Pelican before of about any maintenance I did inside the flowway. Um, the, the resident did not call me and complain. They called here and, or they sent an email and request, well, they may have called. But they requested, they made the request to have the lotorals removed from behind their home. It is a gateway water body. I followed the pond standards. I went over and staked his property, Aquagenics sprayed them out.
And we're not, we're not, the, I want to be direct here. What, we're not disputing the action that was taken necessarily.
Correct.
We're just, uh, Bob is requesting before action be taken to have P-PAC notified. Uh, now, what you would have said.
Pelican would have said no.
But, right, so that's, there's two, there's two pieces of this.
I can't, I can't take Pelican's.
One second, please. So there's two, there's two components here. One is a request for, for P-PAC to be made aware. But then also Bob, there is, you would have, P-PAC would have said no action.
Correct.
So if P-PAC says no action and. Staff's recommendation is, is to take action. That's where, that, that's where we almost need to figure out.
Got to come back here.
Well, if, if we want to adjudicate every simple thing, but I mean, we've been doing this now for twelve years without issues. When our, when we tell our residents the answer is no, that's the end of it.
I, it's my understanding that this has not been an issue in the past because uh, the prior requests have been for. Removal of things on the ponds, which are controlled by the ponds group in Pelican, where this was on a flowway, so it's, it's unique, it's something different.
We're not, we're not disputing the action that was taken. We're, we're just discussing whether.
Going forward, how.
Coming up with a policy for how to handle if there's something like this were to happen in the future.
Because we have gotten all kinds of calls since that was sprayed out.
Make, making the contact, I don't have a problem, but if there's a discussion uh, for staff, once. Staff needs to tell us that, hey, we disagree with P-PAC or whatever, and it comes back here and then we make a decision.
Because I think what Bob.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and what I think what Bob's point is, the pond, their pond standard in P-PAC's mind extends to. Flowways as far as their policy on lotorals and, and residents having the ability to, uh, to dictate remote.
Correct.
Uh, so I think that's, that's just where there's a contradiction in terms of how we would treat it if it was, you know. A pond in our area or, you know, specifically within the district or how we have handled cases in the past. So can we.
I have a question, but who pay, does Pelican pay for maintenance on the flowway? I know they, they do on the, um. Okay, so then I, I don't necessarily understand why would they have a say. I can see it on their own ponds. But if they're not willing to participate on giving us, let me finish, let me finish. If they're not willing to participate on, with financially to the flowway, we, we can definitely listen to their cause, but I don't think we should necessarily follow if staff disagrees.
Well, I, yeah, and, and for me, I, I, here's my position. I think Pelican has done an exceptional job in managing their ponds and their waterways. Um. And I'm trying to understand the justification for removal of lotoral flowway from a residence request. But again, I, I don't have a.
It's in the pond standards.
I know, but I'm saying what's the benefit is what.
I, I feel, I guess I.
The same benefit that anybody else here that has a pond and doesn't want to see plants behind it, that's the benefit.
It's got on, it's on the flowway.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a house.
The property was on the flowway.
So it was probably aesthetic.
Yeah, it's aesthetic.
And I mean, the, what, Elle is caught between a rock and a hard place because the board has the pond standards, which.
I have, we're not disputing.
We're trying to follow, and then if we don't follow, then we get in trouble for not following.
Not disputing the act.
No problem with uh, reporting to uh, P-PAC or whoever the pond standards committee is over there, but if there is a disagreement, it comes back here.
I won't disagree with them. I would never disagree with them. If they say no, then it's just going to flat come to the board. I am not going to disagree with P-PAC.
Because we're, we're not trying to put you in a position where you have to.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not going to go there.
We're not doing that.
And all we're saying is when a complaint comes in, there'd be no comment. It's just the complaints forwarded to P-PAC and we handle it.
Yeah, and it, like I say, he didn't call and complain. He said that he had, you hear it here in the meeting all the time. He made a request to have the lotorals move behind, removed behind his property.
And that's absolutely.
The development order calls for nothing on that flowway, so we, we.
You can't tell me it was a resident that knows that, Elle.
No, 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 he didn't say that. I said that.
I know he didn't, I know he did.
I said that.
So all you, I know, and that's the whole point. Just forward the complaint, your request. To the pond group, that should be the end of it. You'll never hear of it again.
Okay, so that's, that's that. Um, any additional questions for Elle? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'm still here. I got the next one too.
Is there, are there any questions on the landscape report? Because that was.
Yeah, I mean, no, there's, there's none, so we'll just.
Well, I have one other thing before we leave ponds. Uh. Have you seen yet the live ponds work group report that they're issuing now?
Yes. Oh, I haven't seen the live report. No, I have seen their, the website though to.
Yeah, I, I saw the, the prototype, but now it's actually up and functioning and to the board. There, um. Somebody goes and visits every pond like Elle's doing right now, and they have tablets. In real time, they put their complaints, whatever their complaint is, and so they've got lotorals thirteen feet. So they'll circle on the tablet where the problem areas, and that goes directly to the vendor. Then the vendor answers back within a timeframe, there's a prescribed timeframe, what they're going to do about it. I mean, it is really slick. Pardon? They developed this system. They, they wrote a program to do that.
Well, for me, I don't know if I'd open it up necessarily to, to residents, but it would be great for, for staff.
Yeah, but, well, that's right. When I say residents, we're talking about pond volunteers.
You're, you're, yeah, okay.
The, the volunteers. And it covers things like aeration and whether the aerators are working.
I love that.
It's a lot of things, and, but it gives you a great historical record. So I'm just throwing, I know Elle's been aware of it.
Did I say who is, you said they, but who is they?
They is Pelican Reserve Pond's Work Group. They wrote the program.
Oh, Pelican wrote it?
Pelican wrote it. It's one of the pond vogue, we got some people over there with real talent, and they, they tested it on, it's wonderful.
Right.
Can we adopt, can we adopt that same technology for the district?
Oh, yeah, no problem. They'll give it to you. But I'm just throwing it out. I think it might.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it in action and, and it is pretty sweet. And just like Bob said, it's, it's really sweet.
Let's figure out what we need to do if we got to pay somebody for it.
I don't even think you have to pay for it.
I think that, that, I believe that the utilities department is right now working with a uh, prospective vendor. I don't know that.
Correct.
Perspective vendor, that they are researching these programs. Um.
What was it? I forgot the name of it.
Um, Carter, Cartograph?
Cartograph, yeah.
Cartograph. Um, so, yeah, we've seen a couple of demos um, here in the boardroom. Um.
Is this the alternative to Passarella? Or is this something?
It is, no, it's, it's, it's a comprehensive, yeah, work order and everything.
But anyway, I just throw that out. I think it's an easier way to do it.
It, it, the thought is there and it's in the works. They're, they're looking into it and it would be utilities, stormwater.
Parks.
Landscaping, parks, everything.
The real benefit of this for us is a year from now, two years from now. If Aquagenics is saying we got a problem on pond thirty-eight, well, we now have history from pond thirty.
Yeah, here's all this.
This isn't something new. You knew it was coming, you should have handled it. That's all.
I do, I do keep a history of all the pond um, maintenance reports since, from back when Lake Masters was here.
Okay.
I can tell you what.
That's all I got here.
Okay, going forward to landscaping, I did have one thing to throw out there for the landscaping report. Uh, the FPL easement was mentioned before. I reached out to um, FPL and I am going to have a gentleman getting back with me, his uh, Mr. Keys. And um, he is the property manager or forestry manager for FPL. He's going to be getting back to me and let me know if they can um, do some work down there along the path. To clean that up and get it back because it's really crowding the path and people are having a hard time. Getting down there with a bicycle or whatever. It's a safety issue. So I'm waiting to hear, and he said that he should have something for me by the end of next week. Um, flower rotation will happen in December. And I think that's all I have to add to the landscaping at this point.
Okay.
Hey, Elle, I just have one thing. I, it was nice to see that, you know, the, the reporting that we've been doing to Mainscape went from. Two to four to twenty-three. It's a huge increase. Um, so kudos to Jim to actually being logging those um. Requests. I do want to make sure, I, I did, I did receive an email from him on ten-ten prior to him leaving. That he stated that personal touch will be trimming the oak trees at the church across the street per the contract. Those trees are not on our property.
Correct.
So I don't want, I don't want a bill later on because we trimmed the trees that are on the church property and they're outside of our contract. I just wanted us to be clear.
I'm so sorry, Bobby. Um, we are referring to relevance uh, right across.
Yes. Yes. I will forward to the email because he said personal touch is going to do those at no cost because they're included in the contract, but they are, they, they are not included on the contract. Unless they're doing it the kindness of their own heart, thank you, but they're not.
Okay, I will make sure that they are aware that they don't trim those trees.
Okay, thank you, Elle. And uh, just to kind of move things along, we've got the Stony Brook Advisory Committee Resolution. Basically, it's to take that advisory board from eleven down to seven. Is there any issues?
Motion to approve.
I have a.
Uh, one second.
I just have one count. My concern is, um, one count. One, my concern is that when it talks about no more than three members of the advisory committee may be a member of the Stony Brook at Gateway HOA Board of Directors, I would suggest that be, be one to have sunshine, avoid sunshine law issues, because the concern would be when the Stony Brook HOA Board meets, those three, if they talk district business-
I always worry about quorum.
Yeah.
But now, now you got sunshine.
Correct. So no more than one Stony Brook board member?
HOA board member.
Do you have a, do you guys have a problem with that?
How do you get around it?
Yeah.
The alternative would be if they want to have more than one, if, if-
But why do you need, I, I, I'm trying to understand why you need board members on your advisory board. It seems like a-
Well, in what, from the standpoint-
Do they have enough volunteers?
Yeah, and I'm not the attorney for the HOA-
You're closer to the reality than you may-
I'm not the attorney for the HOA, HOA Board, but what will happen, in my opinion, is every HOA Board meeting will then need to be noticed, advertised, published, minutes taken, and the board members cannot talk about any district business outside a noticed public meeting. That's what will happen.
HOA Boards can meet as long as, and if you've got a seven-member board, three can meet at any time and discuss anything.
That's correct.
Not subject to sunshine.
Well, unless they are members of the advisory committee, then the sunshine law comes in.
Then we got a problem.
Yeah, and I understand.
Joe McCalkes, Stony Brook, and I also chaired the advisory committee and have for 11 years. This isn't, was a subject of conversation, and Tony issued, it's not new. And in fact, whenever we had a new committee member, it was always, you would actually call in to the first meeting that they would, uh, attend and explain sunshine law to them, because not everybody gets it. There are people that think that HOA, uh, Boards are subject to it, and they're not. They have a different standard that's set by 720. I get that. One of the reasons, um, is that we, people from the board come with experience and knowledge of the community that the average resident doesn't have, and it does offer some advantages when we're having discussions. It allows us to move things a little bit faster. The concern at the HOA meetings, I'm not so sure it really comes up that much. Uh, people ask something at the, uh, at the board meetings. We're, we tend to be aware of it. The individuals who are on the board, um, try not to be the ones to ask the questions, because they know the questions. Uh, we tend to get more questions from others who are not on the committee. Is there a compromise? Get it down to two. But in the past, we've also had a problem of having enough people to be able to- One of the reasons we dropped 11, first, there's not enough places to sit up there for 11 people, but also we didn't have enough, we were having a problem. The number 11 was forced upon us, and I don't want to go down that history, but, uh, we had trouble getting quorums. We went through periods of time that we, people just stopped showing up, and we couldn't get quorums.
I understand what you're saying on all that. I just don't understand how we get around the law.
Well, I agree. Why can't you go, why don't you go five members with, with two, with an exception with two board members?
Actually, seven has worked out to be a pretty good number.
Same problem, still the same problem.
Oh, yeah, well.
It's the one-
You haven't solved anything with that, yeah.
The only answer is one, or otherwise you're violating sunshine law.
And, and there's nothing, yeah.
That's the problem.
What about where we have a situation right now where we do have three?
Then you got a problem.
Because we're going to have a problem filling the, uh-
I just don't see why you need three board members on your advisory committee.
It just so happens they are, and, and what's going to happen is that at the next election, which isn't that many months away, there won't be three. It, it's just that there's an overlap.
With three, it's possible to keep them with three. They just got to go through the advertising.
Not just the advertisement, minutes have to be taken.
Yeah, they just do all that.
And they have to be noted, meetings have to be, meeting have to be noted.
I don't see that that's any big issue.
And they can't talk about any CDD business at all outside the noticed public meeting.
Which kind of defeats the-
You know, if they go to their neighborhood meetings-
That's the whole purpose of the committee.
Well, he's talking about the HOA meetings, I believe, is that for-
No, anytime. I mean, in their neighborhood, they can't go, if, if I'm a board member, you're a board member, and I'm, we're both on the committee, we can't get together and talk about CDD stuff affecting-
I mean, to me, it would be, and again, I, I understand, and I'm not that engaged.
I'm just trying to protect you guys.
I understand.
I don't want it all on the front page of the papers, okay?
If you're talking about-
You'll mugshot.
Go to five, have your board advisor, which is your, which is your one board member. I mean, to me, that would just be so-
What you may want to do also is, if, if the HOA Board wants to designate a board member as a liaison, liaison to the committee, so that person's always attending. They don't have a vote, but they're always attending-
They'll miss the chair.
Lending historical-
Or the vice chair.
Yeah, they can lend the historical context, as Joe was talking about. So you have one HOA Board member as a committee member, then you have, then the, the board of the HOA designates one of their members as a liaison.
They still can't talk to them.
No, they can't, no, because they're not on the committee.
Well, you can talk, but you can't vote. He can offer-
No, no, they're not on the committee.
Yeah, but he's right. They're not on the committee.
Okay.
In fact, that's actually been discussed, because there was a board member who says, suppose I wanted to come to committee and want to speak. Well, that's not an issue, because he's not on the committee, and, and I understand that.
And I don't think there's anything holding additional, you know, you've got people that are interested in a subject or whatever. I don't think there's anything holding them back from attending and providing-
Well, let me say this. Is everything else in the, uh-
Yes.
Okay, except for that one issue.
Yes, sir.
I just have one, I have one suggestion. Um, just to make it, there's some discrepancy. Can we ju, can we have it everywhere that it says "board"? Actually say "Board of Supervisors." Because in some areas, it does say that, and some does not. Just let's make it consistency. So everywhere that it just says "board," I don't want anybody getting confused with, like, the HOA Board, because it doesn't, you know, just keep every, everything "Board of Supervisors." That's the only feedback I had.
He took that off. In fact, you know something? I brought that up, put, make a definition, and then after that, you could use "board" and discapitalize it, and, and I did say that.
So what's the happy medium here?
No, I, I think it's fine.
Just say, uh, "Board of Supervisors."
To write it all out throughout. I think that's fine.
The discussion on the three people on the board, that doesn't, because we have three, or two, or one in the resolution, doesn't mean we have to have that many.
No, exactly.
So if-
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to set a standard, though.
Yeah.
That, that's-
Find somebody else.
But the, the problem is, you, you, if you have more than one, there's absolutely certain criteria you have to follow.
Yes.
And either you're going to do it all the time, regardless of whether you have one board member or three, it's, it's difficult to manage.
I think it's really-
I don't think we need to manage. On the committee, the, uh, office here, and they, and they review them, and then they make sure that they, yeah, there we go. And that would be one of the things that we would be, hopefully, necessary, whether their qualifications are, if on board, not on board, those are-
I, I just wanted to say he went back right there between the boards, once, once he referring to the HOA, he went to his-
But approach is no more than one member of the Stony Brook-
And the other is the liaison.
Well, that's up to, that's up to the HOA Board to establish the liaison.
Is that acceptable?
So it is up to you guys. It's, you know, it's, it's your final say. There is one other thing I'd like to, uh, point out, and it's probably not as, that significant, I hope. If you go to your website, and it makes references to the committees, and there is, it states there that this committee was established in 2012, that's not correct. The committee was established in 2009. I don't know if it's worth changing, but that is the case. The original resolution was in 2009. There was a change and a different resolution in 2012, but that was not the origin of the committee.
I'll, I'll take care of it.
And so our recommendation is, is one board member, or liaison. Is that what we're?
No, no, I, I think the recommendation is, accept the resolution as presented with two changes. One is, it says not, not more than one member of the advisory committee may be a member of the Stony Brook at Gateway HOA Board of Directors. And then in all places where it talks about the board meeting, the Board of Supervisor, spell that out, the Board of Supervisors.
And let me just ask you, Joe, if you pull back the three, because I think historically, three is part of that seven. If you pull back the three, does it make more sense to pull your, your, you know, your, your group back to five? Would you, you know, because if, if you talk about quorum and having participation, I mean, I know how difficult it is to get people to participate.
Me, though, comes down to establishing a quorum. Uh, here's not too much, probably, if you check for good, but when you're dealing with of non-elected people who are going to a meeting, you have five people, you got to get three people there.
So you're saying-
I'm on a fight, uh, HOA, if the village has five, and we're always checking if we're going to have a quorum for our meeting.
So seven gives you a, a greater ability to get quorum.
There's, there's one more, uh, person of, of margin of error, because four meets the requirement for seven, three for five. So you got two more people to get that fourth person.
All right.
In addition to that, sometimes that extra person is the one that brings the good idea. You know, seven has workforce, and, uh, I don't think that needs to change. In fact, I believe, uh, you know, seven is an up-to number, really, um-
Yeah, our resolution says five. We don't want to go below five.
Yeah.
And we don't want it to go over seven, because we only go to 11.
Uh, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's gone. That, we, we haven't done that for many, many years.
You have a, if I understand it right, you have a minimum threshold of five and not to exceed seven.
Uh, and that was never our idea in the first place either.
Okay.
But that's another subject. But I do want to say something. We do have an interim problem right now. We have three. Can we?
If you do, we pass this, two's got to go.
Two's got to go.
Yeah.
So they can arm wrestle or-
Put coins or-
Rock, paper, scissors.
Fight to the death, something like that.
Rock, paper, scissors, yeah.
I don't want to say "leave" that, but allow it, though, like, that much.
I knew he was going to say that, right?
Again, if you all want to do that-
That's the shortest answer on the other one. You got that right.
Is the other one?
Thanks for answering your question.
Or the other one is we approve this, and it's effective Jan, January 1?
I, I, I-
Opened it.
Then they have to start, then they have to start doing all that work.
I think we just, yeah.
Got you.
Yeah, have an 18-minute, uh, vacancy on the tape here or something, you know.
Joe, I, I have a question. If, if there, if there are volunteers and they're willing to go, and, and there is a value of having, you know, more people that are on the board, well, why can't we just keep it to one and have the other people attend as residents and, and, and still aid, you know, with their knowledge? I mean, if they're, if they're willing to go because they're part of the board, and they should be willing to go and just sit on the other side of the chair, you know what I mean? There's so-
They can still-
The title is all they're losing. We're not saying that they can't go. We're just saying they're not having the title, but they're still, if, if they wanted, they'll be there just sitting on the other side and aiding the, the seven.
I, I, I understand that, and that, and that's a possibility, but as I look, I've been to many meetings, and people have served on this board and come and gone. How many come to meetings once they're off the board? Not many. Rod's here tonight, but not many come. And even at our HOA, when they're done with the board, I'm an exception there and warrant. Not too many people come anymore. So I, I'm not sure that's going to happen, but I appreciate the suggestion. We'll go back and tell them we're going to have to do something. It may be temporarily, we might go to five, because I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to be a little bit of trouble. We just tried to find a, a member, and, and it was lean, because someone was going to step down. In fact, she was a board member, and then she changed her mind, but she may have to now. We're, we're, it's going to be a little tough getting that, those couple, and you, you want the people to be qualified and, you know, and also willing to come and do some, some work, anyway. But I appreciate your consideration.
Because I think what we're saying, Joe, just to be clear, if you, if you stick with seven and you have three, there's very specific guidelines you're going to-
Oh, you know, if you have, if you have more than one, you're going to have-
I'm sorry, if you have more than one, there's very specific guidelines, and it may hinder the way you're operating today.
Well, and what that also does-
I understand.
Well, and what that also would do is open up the association as an entity that has to comply with the sunshine law and the public records law, because when you start bleeding over, then you, I don't think you want your association to have that issue.
Yeah.
Tony, you know we've had this discussion.
I'm sorry?
You know we've had this discussion.
I know.
All right, so Joe, just let us know what, you know.
Well, I, I, it's, uh-
And Joe, didn't, didn't one, one, are we talking about when Angela was going to resign? Okay, because I remember that's when we got the original email from one of the residents, because I know that we had at least two candidates that wanted to go, you know, one was Margaret, and then was another one. So your statement saying that, you know, we had one that was going to resign, but there wasn't going to, somebody going to take the place, that's why she stayed? Not quite, because, you know, we had two other people, at least that I know, that wanted to step up and, you know, volunteer.
At that point in time, both of them were decent candidates, too. I agree. And, uh, and I'm hoping that's still an option going forward if we have to take this action. And, and, and I don't want to take anywhere your time, but I would say, bring it to a vote now, because what happened is, some years ago, we got to this point, there was never a vote, and it never came back up again.
You're, you're comfortable, you don't need to take it back, whatever our decision is.
I, I, no.
I'll make the motion, as Tony indicated.
And we have a-
I'll second the motion.
But if they history, you will see why we're pushing to get it done now, because it's just been a-
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And, uh-
That's a tough one.
So I want to get Premier up here. Um, we've been waiting patiently, which you should be used to sitting in boardrooms and, uh-
Yeah.
Normally, we're normally better than- We, we've gotten these down just a couple hours, so.
Uh, what, what's nice to see is, no matter how big or how small a CDD is, the issues are the same.
Yeah.
It's, uh, but, yeah, I'm Cal Teague, and I think I know just about everyone here. Doug, you were just coming on the board when I left. Uh, but I'm the principal owner of a small management firm called, uh, Premier District Management. Uh, I had been a regional manager for Southwest Florida with Severn Trent, and when I left that company to start Premier, uh, that's when I left Gateway. And, but I did help you bring Chris in, so, uh, and I think Chris was a good find. The, uh, someone that I respect quite a bit came to me, uh, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and said that, uh, asked what we could do. Could we help you in some way in filling a gap until you bring in a permanent manager? And I, I said we could, and as we started talking, I met with, uh, Mr. Tinkel, Tinkle, and I met with Lori, and got feedback, and I think the best that we can offer is a three-headed approach. Uh, that would be, on the project side, we would have, uh, Scott Connell, who had been the operations manager here. And then a, uh, somebody that's worked with me before, uh, as a district manager, or a assistant district manager. Uh, he was a friend from Michigan that was a city manager for quite a few years, and, uh, graduate of Notre Dame, which, you know, we won't hold that against him.
We won't hold that against him.
But Gary and I knew each other in, in Michigan when we were both city managers. Uh, so we put something together, looking at it not, uh, cost not to exceed. Uh, we've got two primary functions. One would be the district management side of it, where we would put a, uh, Gary in here for 32 hours a week, he'd attend your meetings, and then I would be available, uh, I'd put 10 hours of my time in there every month. Uh, and I'd be available to assist and, in any way needed by the board or by Gary. And Scott, uh, the second component of that would be, uh, the, the, the project management or the public works portion of it, and Scott Connell would handle that, and we've got 20 hours a month, or a week, 85 hours a month of Scott's time built in there.
How much would Scott be onsite for that?
Uh, up to 80, 85 hours a month. I-
Okay, so the 20 hours, uh, a week would be onsite for-
About 25%.
About 25% in, either in the office or in, in the district, on district property-
Yes.
Handling district business. Okay.
Yeah, and you'd, uh, with the monthly bill, you would get a breakdown of the hours that was spent. Uh, but that's why we put it at a not to exceed number. The, uh, Gary is here. Scott, unfortunately, his wife had an accident, and he took a phone call and had to go help her out, so. Not too far from here, Ortiz and, and Daniels, I think it was, or Ortiz and, uh, Martin Luther.
That's a nice assumption. So Cal, what is the, what's your estimated duration for your proposal? What do you?
Well, we put a minimum of three months, uh, but, uh, we're willing to hang around for six months if that's what you want.
I want to just make sure that we're clear on, if, if we need six months, that the resources are available. So I would almost budget for, for six months, because I'd hate to get in the three-month mark. We haven't, you know, haven't found the candidates that we need, and then you get other assignments, and then we're, we're in a position, so.
I basically said the same thing to Cal, is, is that, contrary to what a lot of our residents think, the district managers grow on trees, uh, I think it's going to be a challenge, uh, to find this person, and I think you very well go that six months.
And it'll be, it's important for us for, for, uh, your leadership staff to work in conjunction with Laura, you know, on day-to-day, but also, you know, she's just, and I do want to recognize Laura for recently getting her district manager certification. So that's, that's great. Congratulations.
Yep, I passed.
Yeah, um, but also continue to, you know- Yeah. Um, but also continue to, you know, uh, in, in her role, you know, leading her, given her coaching experience. And, and, you know, three heads are definitely better than one. So, uh, and I know two of the, Gary, I don't, I don't know you, but, uh, Cal and Scott, I'm very familiar with. So I think that'd be good, good learning opportunities for her.
And it is a cost savings for you.
Yeah.
Yet, uh, we ran some numbers, what you've got budgeted, uh, on an annualized basis, you're saving about ninety thousand dollars.
And, and I think what we're trying to do is, one, our top priority is, is to.
Experience.
Well, the top priority, replace the district manager, or at least fill the district manager responsibility. Now, if we can do that through, uh, consulting for, you know, three to six months or six months, that's fine. But again, our ultimate goal is to, unless something changes, uh, is to, is to backfill that district manager role. And, and also have you look at, you know, driving the day-to-day. Um, looking at opportunities for our organization to grow and improve, whether that's organizational design, operational, um, you know, efficiency, whatever, you know, along those lines too. So there's a lot of moving parts. Again, probably not that different when you and Scott were around as far as, you know, the focus. But I think the district's different today than it probably was, you know, somewhat when, when you and Scott were here. So I'm gonna stop talking for a minute. Is there any questions from the board? Uh, I don't think you have any questions. You.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that, uh, after the first month, whenever we start, but after the first month, we'll prepare and submit to the board a report that would just basically tell you what are our observations? Uh, how can you strengthen your organization? Uh, just, you know, but we want to get feedback from the board.
And, and we may give you some specific areas, either the board or Laura might give you some specific areas to dive into to either validate our existing structure, how to drive more operational efficiency, look at organizational design, you know, vendor management, you know, it's a lot of different components, but we might give you some specific things to target.
Yep. Okay.
Any, Bobby, you have anything?
No, I have no.
Uh, Mr. Guy or Flavi, is there anything specific for Cal while he's here?
Flavia, you're on mute.
Sorry, no, yeah.
I have nothing specific at this time.
Uh, it's good to see your, hear your voice again, Bill.
Oh, thanks. Thanks a lot there, Cal. Been a long time.
Yeah, and I, I do remember meeting Flavia on your lake. I think Scott and I, maybe L. Uh, we, on your lake, talked about, uh, some of the issues that, like I say, the issues have to change from community to community and, and, uh, you know, so it's, it's, CDBs are similar.
My computer just died, I'm sorry. What is our, what's our, um, what's the proposed monthly service fee?
Uh, a not to exceed nineteen thousand, uh, seven fifty.
Okay, I see it. Okay, alright.
And I set the maximum, uh, Gary, uh, the hundred and fifty hours a month for in the office of my time. Uh, that's pretty much set. I, we're not gonna put anything less. But Scott does not want to work more than twenty hours a, a week.
Scott's the one that's probably got the, the float more than anybody, uh, depending on some of these actions that are gonna be coming up that are largely utility-based, uh, and what would happen perhaps with Worthington and some of these other interesting issues that are, uh, engineering background.
Sure.
But, uh, uh, the rest of it, I think, is fixed. I love your idea that we'll pick the brain. That's, that's what we're buying, is we're buying the experience of the brain.
Yeah, well, and. We're, we're getting, uh, you know, we're getting a lot of resources, uh, which is probably what we need during this transitional period. Uh, so I'm, I love the idea and, uh, I do want to just, you know, uh, just ask staff. So Laura and, and Kenny, while you're here, is there, um, any questions that you might have? Is there, you know, do you guys, are you in support of going in this direction? Kenny says yes.
I, I asked all my questions when I had breakfast with them yesterday.
Alright, then I guess we can move this to, uh, to a motion.
I'll make the motion. We accept the proposal from Premier District Management, uh, for up to six months. And that the first day of work will be Monday.
Yeah, you've got our proposal as far as, uh, and I'm sure there's nothing, even your evil mind could come up with that we would be opposed to.
So.
He's been on a roll lately.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And authorize the chairman to sign the.
Yes.
Necessary documents.
So I've, I've got a motion and a second and just one point of discussion. Are you, are you guys ready to go?
Yes. In fact, Gary, uh, had asked about coming in tomorrow, just kind of meet everybody, spend some time.
We're not paying you for tomorrow.
Right, oh, absolutely.
And again, we do understand if there is a little bit of ramp up. Uh, you know, I would love to be at a hundred percent operational by November first. I mean, if you guys are ready to go and put in the, put in the hour, start Monday, that's fine too.
Yeah, and your choice.
Well, and, and the other one, that's, and you mentioned it in here, and that is, is that after you and Laura and Gary have talked on this management person is to see if, if we're not getting the bounce back, perhaps we can look at something that you guys have, uh, idea of going national on this to try to get somebody.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I put an option. I've, uh, what I've done in some of the cities, uh, as a city manager, when I left, uh, take another job, they asked if I would help them with the search. And I, so I've done that. And there's two levels. Uh, we'll help fill all of your vacancies, you know, screen them, put them to you, and that's part of the fee. But if you're looking for a full blood, blood, just like what you do, Doug, uh, headhunter search, then that would be an extra cost.
And, and just one last question. Um, with, with Premier, are you doing more short-term consulting or are you doing annual?
Uh, they're all annual.
They're all annual. Okay, so this is a little bit of an exception. This is project-based, you know, but, okay, so this is something for us to consider.
Yeah, what I'll do, I'll, I'll chat with Cal, uh, figure out the payment schedules and all that, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, uh, when.
I can't believe you said I have an evil mind.
So I need to call the vote. Um, so I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you for your support and your confidence and we'll, uh, Gary will be there tomorrow and we'll start formally on Monday.
Thanks for putting this together so fast.
I think Mr. Guy.
Mr. Guy, did you have something else?
Oh, he's off. That's what he said.
And I think what we should probably do is, I mean, I know I'd definitely like to meet with, uh, with each of you, but I'd also would extend that to the board. I mean, again, I don't, I don't want to suck up all your hours just meeting with the board, but, uh, I do want to open that up and we can maybe coordinate with Laura if there's, you know, if you want to spend, you know, thirty minutes, you know, with Gary just to.
Let me know.
Or whatever.
And, and that's one thing we want to do. We want to meet with each of the board members and get your feedback, what you're looking for, what are your goals? And, uh, you know, uh, it, it's a team effort and, you know, on a contract basis, uh, for short-term, we're part of your team.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Are you gonna be in Brazil for six more months, Flavi, or are you gonna come home?
No, I'm coming home on the fourth.
Alright, so, uh, I'm moving on to four-seat utility vehicle requests.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility director. Uh, basically what we're, uh, I, I'm asking of the board is to go on to the used car market for this. The current state, uh, there, we can order anything we want, but there's nothing in stock. Um, we, we started probing around, uh, through the, uh, on the used car market. And there again, with the mini-transit, uh, the, the vehicle I think would work best for, for the metering side. Um, if you can't buy it that day, it's gone the next. And on the u, on the new cars, uh, they're more than willing to let us purchase one, but they cannot give us a date when it will.
We don't know, we'll get it.
Just, we just don't know.
What is, how urgent is the need? I mean.
It's not like right away, but.
You could order it and then.
But it would, it could be months, months and months and months.
Or a year or more.
Might even take you that long. So I think, I think what Fox was trying to say is we should be looking at, you know, maybe what it, because even like used, I mean, I, I've looked for them and there's not, there's not a whole lot of inventory for used out there.
I hit up Carvana and I found, I found some, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, yeah.
But if you don't buy that day, it's gone the next.
Yeah.
I mean, there, you have to move on.
Basically just open up the opportunity.
It's kind of like the labor market right now.
Find it, buy it regardless of it's, I know we've had it, I think Chris kind of had a policy that he wasn't a big fan of, of used vehicles. So what we're trying to do is circumvent that.
Buy it, someone helps with trouble.
Yeah, so.
And for what we need and for our district being two miles across and five miles long, it, high mileage, I, I wouldn't be interested in a high mileage vehicle, but within a twenty thousand mile would be, below would be a good. And these, and I found these mini-transits are just, are just crazy demand. I mean, if, if you can't buy it right down in there, it's most likely to be gone.
And what's the difference between a new and a used from a cost perspective? Just curious.
Almost fifteen thousand dollars from what I've seen.
Usually related by.
And that, and then we're also gonna have to customize it so we could potentially find one that's already kind of, is there, that, that it's been used.
So, and, uh, so you just need approval for this, that's.
To move on to the car market, yes.
It's currently budgeted.
Yes.
And if, if we find one, um, because I have access to the account at the bank, I can get the money, I can go get the check to buy the vehicle, so.
So if we find it, we want to be able to grab it.
Alright.
If it suits our needs.
Do you want the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Go find the vehicle.
Go find needle and haystack.
Okay, um, do any items to pull for consent agenda, A and B?
I didn't.
Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Uh, so let's go to browser comments. Uh, Flavi, I'll start with you since you're remote.
Uh, I just had a question, I guess, this, I, poor Laura. Um, has the vendor come back to address the sidewalk issue, uh, by Guiwe Greens that we're having some water retention issues?
Did you look at that?
We, we passed that on to Brian before he left and nothing got done.
I gave it to Kenny.
Just about two areas where we got low spots that they didn't get enough fill in there and waters piling up on the sidewalk. One's right about straight across from the, uh, Pommings Park and the other one's a little north of that.
The new sidewalks?
The new sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, Kenny is working on it.
Okay, this weekend, if we get a rain, I'll try to get a picture and get some.
I saw it when I came in. Oh, no, that was on Griffin. That was a different place, sorry.
Yeah.
Griffin too?
Is that it? Flavi, is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Bob, anything for you?
Uh, I have two things. Uh, first, I guess I'd like to get the feeling of the board as far as having staff move forward to share the cost of flowway maintenance. I don't know what those costs are on an annual basis, but I think it would be appropriate that if we can get the various constituencies that are contributing one, to pay their fair share based on footage or gallons or whatever's appropriate. The, the problem is right now is how do we go about getting communities such as Pelican Plantation, Arborwood, Colonial, Botanica Lakes, and the Treeline Elementary School to step up to pay for that? But.
We, we, we solved that problem, I thought, on the segment between Treeline and the interstate, that's Colonials.
That's my recollection because they agreed to pay. Well, that, I think their permit, well, what happened was.
That they agreed to do the work.
Yeah, what happened, my rec, I, I have a real thick binder on it, Bob, if you have nothing to do one day or weekend. Uh, because the issue came up years ago where Colonial was blaming this district for not maintaining that. And then when I did the research, found out that the South Florida Water Management District, originally the flowway was built to a width of X, let's just say. Then when Colonial came along, they increased it to X plus. And at the time that South Florida Water Management District says maintenance, operating entity maintenance is, if I recall correctly, Colonial Country Club for that stretch from Treeline to I seventy-five. I recall they were the operating entity. They're responsible to maintain that. I can dig all that up for you and give it to you.
Well, but don't be doing it.
I don't know. In fact, what happened was.
Well, you know, the, you, the trouble we had at the interstate entrance of the flowway all jammed up. They hadn't done squat about that.
Well, and that's my point. Now we're getting a new community like Arborwood, Arborwood, that's gonna be.
Arborwood's coming in. You, you mentioned them all, but the, the problem is, is that how do you get them to the table?
Is there a methodology?
Yeah.
What happened there, Colonial fired the first shot. I did the research, we fired back and then they went, ooh. And what we had at the time, we drafted a proposed agreement between Colonial and this district for the maintenance of that segment. Nothing ever happened. Colonial said bye-bye or whatever. Now, arguably, we, when I look, I can go back and look at everything, we could possibly contact South Florida says, hey, they are the operating entity. Can you make sure Colonial, as the operating entity, is maintaining that system? That, that's one approach.
But that doesn't do anything for Colon, uh, for, uh, Botanica, the elementary school.
Well, the elementary school. I asked, I asked that years ago, how do we get to them?
My recollection is Botanica, uh, the school does not discharge into that flowway if I'm not mistaken.
Well, there's not a lot of parking lot.
No, it goes straight down into, it flows right into it.
I think, I, well, I think the plans show it otherwise.
Okay. Well, it, it certainly she closed to the door.
Worth our while to pursue it. I don't have.
And if you want me to.
I think I'd go to county first.
What I could do, Bob, is give you all the materials I have on it. In the letter, because I drafted a letter, came to the board.
I'm already seventy-six.
Yeah.
I, I don't have too many.
You're a speed reader, I get it.
Well, here, here's another one. It's, it's a problem that I ran into when we were doing and talking with the state on, uh, Tim Creek, right next door. Those suckers are dumping thirty-two or had the permission to dump thirty-two CFS on it. We, they're not paying for nothing. And that, their flow goes from the FPL East over into Worthington and it'll use every inch of our flowway and they pay nothing.
I mean, I think the first step.
The thing I got at the state is that we can't collect it from them.
The first step is, I think we need to notify the county that if there's an issue, whoever, yeah.
Well, it's really South Florida, against South, South Florida.
Yeah, I think it's South Florida.
Somebody with the teeth to get us. Well, what else, what I'd suggest is I'll retrieve, resurrect, that's from back many years ago.
This goes back, I remember, we did this once before.
Yeah, it was like oh-four, oh-five, oh-six. I'll retrieve all those materials, update the permit data, look at that and come back to the board and say, here's the permit, here's the obligation. Do you want us to notify South Florida, have them check out that facility?
Yeah, to what extent?
I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, what, I, I totally agree with you though, because we got both capital costs and maintenance costs that they, they are using and pay nothing.
And I don't know how much it is. I, it may not even be a big number, but nevertheless, they're using it, they should be paid. Okay, that's first. Uh, second thing is, um, I'd like the board to, uh, buy into the fact that we get staff in consulting, in consultation with the recognized experts in pond and lake management to draft and bring back to the board a proposed revision to our pond standards that would require enhanced littoral planings, i.e. greater than the applicable minimums, applicable codes that are currently there, the developmental orders and permits as part, and make this as part of any lake bank replenishment or restoration project as we move forward. So we tell somebody we're gonna give a, we're gonna restore their lake banks, et cetera. This is one of the requirements. They're gonna have to accept littorals.
Oh, we can't do that.
Well, we can. We actually can. We may not want to.
That dog, that dog won't hunt in this community, I can tell you that right now.
But what I would say is, I, I think, I think what I'd like to do is.
But what you have to do is you have to change development order. And we're, we're gonna be in court paying legal fees like crazy.
Well, what I'd like to do is maybe at some point, uh, in, in the near future, have another working session where we're talking about the pond standards again. And, and the way I would like to go into it is with no preconceived, you know, expectations and looking at it from what is the, what are the best options for the district from an operational management and servicing our residents? And if we say, hey, what we have is, is great, if we say what we need is a, a standard of course, all ponds, then that, that's an option. So I think we need to have more discussion.
Right.
Because it's getting really, I mean, it's convoluted.
We, we, we fixed this, uh, snail up a number of times and keep putting it down. I like to try and run the rabbit to the hole. Uh, because the world says littorals are beneficial. There's nobody that says they're bad. That's not to say residents like them. But if they help the pond, they extend the life of, uh, of, of a pond because they're healthier and it helps the wildlife that's there and it, you know, just stops the destroying of lake banks through erosion and stuff and wave action. They're all beneficial.
I think there's a compromise somewhere. I just don't know where it is.
I don't know where it is either.
The big, big compromise is aeration. Get the aeration in. We need that badly.
And maybe, maybe it, we could tie it to aeration as well as pond back.
I'm not, you know, give them a. So let's, let's just, let's just continue having the conversation and let's not be satisfied with, with where we are because we can't manage what we have today. So anyway, I don't want to take away your comments.
That's my only, that's it.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back briefly to the Colonial Country Club? Uh, Cal's company is the district manager.
Yes, I remember actually.
I'll make sure you remember, know that.
Oh, I asked him that today. I said, are you gonna pay for our flowway now that you're here?
What'd he say? Okay, just trying to let you know.
I think we're, I've gone down this, it is a rabbit hole. And the bet, the one that was disappointing is South Florida, when we went to them the time, I remember Danny and I went, I don't know if you went, and their answer was, hey, we, we gotta get everybody to participate in here. Well, you're not gonna get our help. We are not going to be the people who make these people pay this money. They are gonna do that. So that's very frustrating.
What do you got?
I had, I had nothing.
Okay, by the way, one other aspect I'll look at also on that is the area nine on the west side of I seventy-five towards flowway discharges is our responsibility. Uh, and I believe, and I'll double-check that NPDES interlocal agreement that talks about various entities and water leaving your jurisdiction has to be compliant. I'll, I'll check that also.
It would seem to me if Colonials between us and I seventy-five and they've got equity, they ought to have it too.
That's what I mean. The permit requires it, then I'll check the NPDES interlocal agreement also.
Well, if you want to get into it, take it to a really, uh, microscopic level, is what we're talking. Well, if you want to get into it, take it to a really, uh, microscopic level is what we're talking about is a, a mini, uh, MDL where, or, uh, permit limits. They're dumping water in here on us. If we have problems with, uh, that ever becoming real, what do we do? They're dumping it. What, what authority we have to go after them to, to.
Again, it might be, I'll look at that.
That might be the answer is tie it to, uh, uh, permit limits of discharge.
I'll look, I'll look at that interlocal agreement on the MPDES also.
And, and the last thing I want to comment on is I've already gotten a response back from, uh, Stephen Agapi, uh, the eight foot multi-modal is in.
In the plan?
Yeah. Cause he sent the plans and he said it's eight foot plans. I asked him, does that satisfy multimodal? And he said, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So he responded very quickly.
It, it is in?
It is in there. Withdrawal.
So in other words, they just didn't build.
Well, they call it, yeah, they're still building. Yeah. They call it an eight foot sidewalk. And that's why I asked them.
But it's eight foot. So that's.
That's exactly what they put along eighty-two. They had the eight foot, uh, on one side, one side.
So I just have two quick things. One, if you have any topics for the president's council, and remember we're pushing that back, uh, if you'll just send it to Laura, if you have.
Send them to Georgia.
Sorry, send them to Georgia.
They will get lost in my email. Send them to Georgia.
And the other thing I have is I know that we had this conversation and I don't think we budgeted, but I can't remember. Did we say that we are not doing tree lighting ceremony this year?
We don't have any, the only money that we have in the budget for, um, any type of lighting for the holidays is the same as what we did last year. And that's already, they, we actually had to bump it up a little bit to cover their quote.
You mean like monuments?
Just the monuments, the normal things that we do, not the tree lighting. We do not have any money in there for that.
Probably our position is, is not necessarily tying it to budget, but looking at, because we're still, you know, in a pandemic environment that we're, we're going the tree lighting ceremony for this year just to minimize risk.
Sure.
And we'll reevaluate next year. We probably should put something out because a lot of people are starting to ask.
We're going to defer it again this year?
That's what.
You what?
We're deferred.
You don't want to have it this year?
I, I think.
I would still have it. I think we're safe about that.
I, I thought we dropped it because of the COVID issue.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're kind of beyond that.
But we have no, we have no money in the budget for it.
Well, Laura, didn't, didn't we just renamed it? Cause I know Doug had mentioned something about being the fourth of July and I think on the, on the line item on the budget, I think he just said holiday.
Yeah. Well, we.
So.
Renamed it. That's right.
Well, I, I think what we did was we said, hey, uh, do, because of COVID, if we may not even be able to have it because of risk, why don't we just allocate dollars to the event fund? Because maybe we'll do something in July.
The money is there.
Yeah. So we do have the funds. We just don't call the, the, the tree, uh, you know, ceremony or, you know, the holiday, but we do have it. They just call something else. So if you do choose to do it, I just think we're maybe a little bit late on the game trying to get.
Most of these guys were contracted.
Yeah, we were late getting the holiday lighting contract if waiting till October.
Okay. So maybe what we'll do is, you know, again, say, we're not doing anything for tree lighting, but we are looking to do something at some point.
Are we having, uh, uh, Banescape doing a study for us on our, uh, control irrigation system? Where, where do we stand on our, we, we know our irrigation systems piece of crap. And I'd heard at one time a million and a half dollars is, is Banescape doing something, doing an analysis for us of changing our control system?
They gave us a, a quote of one point two million dollars, I think it was to redo their, yeah, to redo the irrigation system, which includes all of that. We would be able to have, we could control it from computers. I don't know if there's a, I'll have to, yeah, but I'll find that.
And the, the last thing I have is I've had a couple of people say that they went and they looked at the ATMs, uh, uh, or looking at, or went to look at the board meeting when they, when, uh, when the guy was here to give the arborist report and they were really, you know, uh, was really impressed. But I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that. I think it was very informative. Uh, and.
The arborist deal?
The arborist.
Yeah. I thought it was real good.
Yeah. So I think we need to, one.
Stay on that.
Stay on it. Like, I, I'd like to do two things. One, we need, uh, you know, we do need a plan.
Probably be a phase plan.
Need a, need a plan. So I don't know if, if, if it's him working in conjunction with the landscape architect, or at least, you know, I think we need to, we need to address that stretch.
I think we need to do it too. And I think I, the reason I like him is he doesn't have a construction dog in the fight to where anybody can come back and tie him to, oh, well, you're just proposing this because you're going to make a million off of us and cut the trees.
He doesn't do the work. We have been just in, in regards to that, we have been getting some calls from residents wondering if or when actually when we're going to put the trees back on Griffin.
I think that's more.
Our gateway that we took out.
Have him start at that end and give us the recommendation and tie it with whatever we're going to do on the emergency road, because that's got some landscaping needs. Speaking of which, do we have a meeting with the city yet?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Nothing I'm aware of either.
And, and I know we didn't budget this, but I think we should pull him, pull the arborists in at least once or twice a year, uh, for consulting for review to make sure.
He's, yeah, he's two hundred dollars in our minimum of.
Give us a, a multi-phase pro, proposal, starting at the north end, coming south of what he would recommend we do.
Okay.
Okay. All right. That's it on me.
I forgot about it. I felt like it's going to do the same thing with the arborist incident. I put there our landscape committee one over there because it was a great idea. Um, back when Brian was still here, there was money allocated for the GIS system of, of Gateway to duplicate the resident focused GIS system of Pelican. We have presentation. We all voted on that. In twenty twenty-one, we put the money in. So now we have money there. And I wanted to get the sense of the board that they're still trying to go that way. I had that conversation with Kenny and, and with Laura about this and the focus over here was still more on the utility side, which could stand on its own. But they haven't really done anything about reaching out to start the foundation of duplicating the Pelican system.
For like the pond side?
Yeah.
We, we're not even close.
So, um, are we still, if we're still ready to push that?
On for it.
Passarella is ready.
We, well, I, I have something to say about that cartograph system that we're looking at. We'll actually let us do that stuff on, we can do, we can map where every bench, every garbage can, ponds, the fountains, the aerators, the meter, all that stuff.
Matching. I, I hear you.
Okay.
It was the focus of it, which is to be a resident, uh.
I think, I think we, I think it's still our position to enhance our GIS system and include, you know, ponds. And so I think, I think our position is still, yes, we want it.
Now the question is, do we go reinvent the wheel or do we duplicate what's already?
I think we need to, I think we need to have that evaluation. I, I wouldn't make that decision.
Laura, well, how much money we have? I thought we, we only have like five thousand dollars, something very, very small that wouldn't get us that far on the budget.
Yeah. It's a hundred, it's, there's a hundred thousand dollars on the utility side. And let me get down to the projects.
Fifty or the others.
I'll get there. Hang on.
Okay.
Where am I?
But I think once we, so once we agree on, yes, we want it, two, how are we going to do it? And three, when can we start?
Yeah. I'd like to see and have, uh, Bob's group, because we, I seen it one time a couple of years ago. I'd like to see it updated.
Yeah, I know. I'm.
Why reinvent the wheel if they've got a system that works and does what we want, you know?
And we're already mapping their system. It's there. It's, the footprint is there. It's just the layers.
There's.
And, and Mr. Jeff, the layers don't include utilities, correct? Because those.
Is it zero?
This is resident focused on resident things, you know, the lot size, the east ends, uh, where the cables are located.
Okay. Lakes, pipes.
Yeah. Okay. Who, who maintains the light?
There's nothing in the capital budget.
There is nothing. That's what I thought. I thought it was originally five and, and, and I thought it stayed at five, but there's nothing. All right, guys, I have to actually go. So thank you. All right. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll check. It's going to be, it's in all one budget. It's not. I'm in the three hundred right now. Uh, Doug, I have some stuff for you to sign.